Good evening. This is Brian Waller, Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman. As a preliminary matter, we'll start. Actually, we'll skip that because there's no members or staff on the phone. It is 7:04 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, extending remote meeting protocols through March 31, 2025. This meeting is convened via Zoom video conference and in person as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation within this meeting will be visible to others. Be aware that sharing your screen will likely be reported and may be broadcast at a later date. This meeting may feature public comment. Anyone attending virtually, if you'd like to request to speak, use the raise hand feature in Zoom, and the administrator will enable you to speak. For those on the phone, our meeting administrator will work with you to allow you to speak. And anyone in person, we ask you to step up to the podium. And anyone that speaks, please state your name and address for the record prior to any comments or questions. And each vote taken this evening will be done on a roll called Vote. So we are going to just address a few other matters before we jump into Snow Road. All right, so the first is nine Logan Path.
Yes, so he asked for another continuance. I put the letter from him in your file. So he's got to deal with Concom and he's got to deal with an environmental engineer. So he's trying to get all that stuff by the end of December, and then he's got to go before Concom. So he's thinking probably sometime after the first of the year with us.
Mr. Chairman, maybe it makes sense to hold off on Logan Path till after Snow Road. Presumably, Snow Road's going to get continued to some date, and then we can piggyback off that date.
I think that makes sense. Do we have any other cases?
None, nothing else has come in.
Okay. Yep, makes sense. And then we also have minutes from November 7th and November 21st meetings.
So, Mr. Chairman, a couple of comments.
Mr. McCusker.
Probably about two-thirds of the way down, a bullet that starts ownership. I think intention is misspelled.
Oh, yep, it is.
Further on down, about four bullets from the bottom height is misspelled.
Yep.
And then the last bullet possibly cut the number of units in half, then charm over a number of units.
Oh, gosh.
I don't know what charm is.
I don't know either.
It would be nice if it was a charming development.
I'll look at the, I'll look at the, um, the video and correct that. I have no idea. Hello there.
Katrina, the second sub-bullet under townhouses.
Yep.
Do we want to say two parking spots recommended? Because right now, it only contemplates one. I want to imply that there are two.
Well, what was said was there's two parking spots per driveway of the condos.
I don't think that's correct.
All right, I'll double-check it.
Yeah, it was one in the driveway, one in the garage.
Yeah, I was the one who said that typically what we want is, and like what Krashen did was two.
All right, I'll check it.
So I think that's what the, the point was.
Yep, no problem.
All right, any other comments on the minutes for November 7th? Motion made in seconded, we'll take a roll called Vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Landgut?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. November 7th accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to add the chairman as a yes vote for both of the votes on Sixth Meadow Lane.
Oh, okay. Oh, probably because I cut and pasted, sorry about that.
And on the second motion, I think the addition was 16 by 24.
Is that from memory? Or are you looking? Yeah, I looked at it earlier.
Hold on, I can look it up real quick.
I think you're right.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCusker.
I move we accept the meeting minutes of November 24th, 21st as amended.
Seconded. Motion made in seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Mahia?
Yes.
We only need five. Chairman votes yes. Carry it away the first. All right, so at this time, I'll, we'll move on to Snow Road. We'll turn the meeting over to Mr. McCusker.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Adams.
I would like to clarify, I made a statement at the last meeting, and it came out all wrong, and I didn't intend to insult anybody, so if I did, I apologize.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to join us? You, I think you've got something new to present, or? Oh, before you start, just, I want to fill the board in. Earlier this week, at the request of the applicant, I did meet with one member of his team to review the, essentially review pro forma type numbers with respect to my request that the applicant include some units at 60% AMI and 50% AMI. The meeting satisfied my concern that the applicant hadn't even really looked at it. You know, after that meeting, it's clear that they did, but I'll make, offer no opinion or, or commentary on the accuracy of any of the numbers. That's not my expertise. If, if, you know, we get to the point of a pro forma review, then we can get into just how accurate his numbers are and that sort of thing. But, you know, one of my concerns was that with respect to the 50% AMI and 60% AMI, it just felt like they hadn't even looked at it. And at this point, they have, and they have, they have justification with respect to why they can't afford to do that. So I just want to share that with everybody that that meeting did happen, and that was resolved. Now you can proceed.
Great, thank you. And for the record, John Grenier, JM Grenier Associates, I'm also here with Mr. Steve Venkasa, who is the applicant. What we left the last hearing with was obviously comments and concerns from both your board as well as some of the abutters, primarily people who are directly to the, to the north who are most affected directly by, by any development on this. So in response to that, we modified our layout plan in order to address what we believe is, is most all of those comments and concerns. In particular, the, there was a comment from one of the abutters where the proximity of the units, the townhouse-style units that were on the northern sideline that directly abuts them, the closest those townhouse units were, were in the vicinity of 14 or 15 feet off of the property line. So in response to that, we removed all of the units that were along that northerly sideline. That was a total of 24 units. There were also some garages that were adjacent to the driving aisle, we removed those garages as well. So now, the closest building, or large building, is the apartment building, building number one and building number four. Building one from the property line is about 120 or so feet off of the property line. Building three in the back is about 100 feet off of the property line. So we significantly pulled that away from the property line, and that would also allow us to, you know, grade better in that area. We have more area. I know that there was a concern, and we haven't designed this yet, but thinking ahead, we know that now we have more room to do better storm water improvements, more swales, country drainage, some type of rain guard, and so that we can increase the water quality for our storm water and that. So in pulling this back, we're keeping that, although we haven't designed it yet, we're keeping that in the back of our minds so that we can accomplish that as well, because we know that that's a concern. There was another concern that was brought up from Graves Engineering regarding driving aisle widths. Originally, we had in the, I would say, the, the outer loop in the front, we had that at 22 feet wide. We have increased driving aisle widths throughout the entire, all the driving aisles to 24 feet wide, and we also provided a, a turning, what they call a auto turn for an emergency vehicle. It wasn't the same exact vehicle that the fire department has, but I think it has a slightly longer wheelbase, so it's a little bit bigger than, than what the, what the fire department has, but we can confirm that with them as well. But we did an auto turn. The tightest point, the island that is in the, on your sheet, the bottom right, adjacent to building four, we changed the radius on that island to make sure that we wouldn't have any issues with, with the turning the emergency vehicle around, going around in front of those buildings. So we believe that with the 24-foot wide driving aisle doing an auto turn, that we do have ability to have safe emergency vehicle access throughout the site. Another item that was brought up was having a, because it was, it was offered up, originally we had a park area or playground area that was in the center portion of the site, behind the clubhouse and the pool in that area. It was suggested that it would be more accessible and more apt to be used by the neighborhood if it were off of Snow Road. Looking at that, at the northwest portion of the property with an access path from Snow Road, we have the ability to put a small park area in there, which you could put some benches, a swing set, you know, it's, this isn't going to be, you know, something out of a, you know, a huge amusement park, but for small kids, somebody wants to walk, you know, bring their kids down there, go on the swings, go on a teeter totter, whatnot. And the sizing of this is similar to a project that was done in Milbury.
Howav.
On Howav, and that's a nice little park area, so we sized it basically about the size of this, that park area that's on the project that we've done on Howav. The parking, we did run through our parking numbers, and on the plan that we gave you, we have a parking summary. So we segmented the townhouse parking from the apartment parking, because people are in townhouses, you have your garage, you have parking in front, that's not really general parking that the apartment units are going to use. So with the, for the apartment per unit, we have 300, and well, total townhouse parking, I mean, I'm sorry, total apartment parking, we have 391 spaces, and that's broken up into 353 exterior spaces and then 38 garage spaces. Now, the question comes up, well, is everybody going to have a garage space? Not necessarily. So we broke it up percentage-wise, where if we have the exterior spaces plus half of the garage spaces, we end up at 1.66 spaces per unit. And then if you included all of the garage spaces, we would be at 1.74 spaces per unit. So looking at, probably, I mean, this isn't an exact number, how many people are going to have a garage space, but we figured about half, you know, some people might store other things in there, they might, you know, put a motorcycle, they might put whatever they want, they might have a, you know, some other things that they want to put in the garage, but we were anticipating about half of them would park their car in the garage.
And I, and I want to say, we did that out of, out of your comments. What we find actually in the units themselves, it's actually more than half. There's, there's actually very few people that use their garage space for just storage, because there's, what we do is we put taller ceilings in those garages also, so there's opportunity to put shelf in the back, at the back of the garage, because they're 10-foot ceilings, and so the back, so you could drive in, you could put a shelf on the back, so you can actually do storage and put your car in there too. So that's a conservative number that he's saying, and, you know, and we did that in response to your comments. These garages are all individualized, lockable, you know, at a condo or open garage door, and you can see everyone's cars.
Yes.
These are all private?
Yes.
So in terms of, and what we, what we're trying to avoid is go through, you know, fully engineered, fully, all the drainage and everything, and then every time if something tweaks, we're changing everything, and then we're having reviews for nothing. So what we're trying to accomplish is to have a layout that functions, that works, that meets everybody's concerns, and knowing in the back of our head when we go, when we start doing our grading, our drainage, our storm water, we're keeping that in mind while we're doing this, so that we know that we can accomplish those goals in excess of what's required. So that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to accomplish with this, so.
We actually could have, we could have accomplished that with the very first proposal, which is much higher density than that, and that's how we know that as we reduce density, it's going to be easier and easier for us to actually accomplish the drainage and the parking and access. That's what he's getting at.
Right. So I think I touched on most of the big topics with this revision. Originally, we were at 268 units, now we're at 240 units, if I'm not, if I think. Yeah, 240, 224 apartment-style units who are in the four buildings, and then 16 townhouse, townhouse styles, and as I said, we, we removed 24 of those off of the northern property line, just we had, again, pull it back, be able to give more of a buffer to the abutters who, that's all their backyards right there, I know one individual has a pool. So trying to work with your board and concerns of the neighbors, that's, that's where we are now. So with that, if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, we'd like to keep working towards, towards making sure we can address everybody's concerns. And, oh, we did get the review from the traffic, we just received that this afternoon. We did have a conference call with our consultant on the phone, we, yeah, emailed it to him, said, can you take a call? So we, we rolled through it. He, there's some things, a couple items that he would like a little bit of clarification on, that he can talk to, to tech on, and, but for the most part, there didn't seem to be anything glaring that was a big problem, was, you know, technical, you know, curve number, this, that, but some things, I, I think that that can be resolved between, between the two consultants.
And again, all these changes.
And we also got that.
Yeah, all these changes that John had referred to now were in direct response to the last couple of meetings that we heard the board say. We took notes, we, we went back, we revised it, we thought about it, and we proposed this, we generated this plan here in response to the comments that we've been hearing back and forth. So we're listening.
Understood, and, and I appreciate that, I'm sure the board appreciates that. Questions or comments from the board on what's been presented so far this evening?
I mean, I would still like 30 or 35 houses, but, and I did not say expensive houses, I just said houses, but I'm just curious, with the one way in and one way out, is it feasible to take the townhouses one and two, and 11 and 12, and make entrances there and put them in the middle?
So.
I'm not saying lose them, I'm saying just put them where, where your entrance and exit is, that way you've got two ways in, two ways out.
So we feel that we have two ways in and out, because we have two dedicated driving lanes, and we also feel that that one entrance coming in, we think that's going to be much better for the neighborhood, for traffic, one, we think it looks much more attractive aesthetically, we think it works better here. We, we've gone down that road, obviously, we have enough frontage to do that, we could do that. It's, it's not our preference. If the board said, that's the only way this is going to get approved, then we would probably take a real hard look at it. But right now, we really do like this one entrance, and we'd like you to, you know, consider the aesthetics. You can also look at our other developments, and we've done actually every single one just like this, and we really wouldn't like to change it.
And I can add on to that, that, that wasn't brought up as a concern from the traffic consultant. The one concern he did have, and I, I always hate to admit it, but he kind of makes a lot of sense, is parking spaces that we have right in front of the clubhouse, those six spaces, right when you pull in, he said that's going to cause confusions and conflict if someone's backing out of there and someone's pulling in. And I like having, like, if you go to the clubhouse, you want to park front row, walk in, you know, whatever, grab your mail, do your business, and leave. But, so that's why I put them right in front, but it does create some awkwardness.
A possibility, but.
Possibility.
But I think in practicality, I, I don't think it will be, because you look at these developments, it looks like it's, it's real busy, and you're going to have dozens of cars driving around all the time, and in reality, it's not the case. In reality, it's, it's, it's pretty quiet and calm.
Right. But the point was that, that one, that double-barrel entrance wasn't brought up as, as an issue from the traffic consultant. He was just looking to get rid of some potential confusion with those parking spaces. So we like the layout of it, we like the look of it, you pull in, you're pulling in, you have the clubhouse there, it's going to look nice, you can landscape that, you have one central entrance way for people who are coming in, it's the functionality and the aesthetics of it.
They actually did, we went through this whole process in, in Milbury recently, last year, and they brought that exact same comment up, and we did a design and showed them the two accesses, and they agreed with us back, and we went back to the single. After they saw it and then thought about it more, they actually agreed with us on the single access. So I understand where you're coming from, it does, has, makes some sense, but.
You're running every car past townhouses, every car, every car. I mean, that comment was made last time about the cars going, coming in, and they have to go by the townhouses, and they still have to go by the townhouses. There's no, there's no avoiding it, unless you get rid of the clubhouse and the pool and put a road right through the middle, which I know you're not going to do that.
No, that, that, that's our most valuable space right there in the middle, that's our, that's our common green space, so we value that immensely. And, and we, we respectfully disagree with your opinion on that. We really think this works well. Obviously, it's very important to us, as we are going to invest a lot of money in this, and we really want the flows to work correctly too. If we really thought that was going to be a problem, we'd, we'd eliminate that in a minute, honestly.
Another concern, when you come in the entrance and take a right or take the left in between the curvings, where you take the right, it looks like there's a crosswalk on the right.
Mm-hmm.
On this set of plans, it scales at 20 feet. I can't scale off, off the new plan, so I'm assuming it's still 20 feet.
What's that, with the other?
In between.
It's 20, the, the driving, the width of that, and there's a little label.
A little further down.
Further down, 24 feet. So that whole driving aisle around the entire project, everything's 20.
So there's no, there's no 20-foot pinch point there, the whole thing.
There's no pinch point.
I mean, I scaled it off, off the old plans.
The old plan I had, well, we had 22 feet. The old plans, we had a driving aisle of 22 feet. We bumped everything up to 24 feet.
Okay.
And I, and I think about that one also, I'm kind of on the fence on that, I, as I'm driving, I, I like the 24 feet, but as an aesthetic, I like the 22 feet. Obviously, the pavement is the least attractive part of the whole development, and part of any neighborhood is the pavement, so we, we really struggle with that both ways.
I do see your hands, sir. I'll take public comment later this evening, we will take public comment, but later on. Other comments?
22 or 24 would work for us, you know, so I could go either way on this, on that one, I think.
No, I just, I, like I say, I had scaled 20 off this, and the 20 seemed a little narrow when you're taking a turn.
Yeah.
John, did that, did the 22 work with the fire truck, or we needed the 24?
No, 22 will work.
Okay.
I just have to make sure the roundings on some of the islands.
We have 22-foot roads in Grafton, and they stink. They're awful.
Come on!
Oh, they're awful. Somebody parks on the side of the road, I mean, this is in house developments.
I know.
And we stopped doing that.
Right.
And you can't get by them.
I agree.
I mean, you can get by them, one car can get by them, but if they park right across from each other, you got to go on somebody's lawn.
I'm going to tell you, I have House and Cape Cod in a really nice neighborhood, and the roads are 18 feet wide, and you do, when, when another vehicle's on, you have to pull over the side, you can't just go whiz and by, and that's okay, it's a smaller neighborhood, this is a smaller neighborhood.
They're just going to the beach, so there's no rush.
No, it has a nice feel to it, though. The narrow roads do have a nice feel to them. No, it has a nice feel to it, though. The narrow roads do have a nice feel to them.
Other comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just had a question. I think during our last meeting, we discussed like the depth of the townhouse driveways and that being a concern, especially pulling it up all the way to the garage. Have these plans changed that at all? I'm curious if that had any effect.
We had, and we still have, in, on the, in front of every garage, we have a minimum of twenty-four feet. Are the units that have the sidewalk in front of them, we make sure we have twenty-four feet to the backside of the sidewalk. So if someone's walking along, they're not going to have, if someone's parked in their driveway, there's a full twenty-four feet. They're not going to block the sidewalk. So we have a full twenty-four-foot depth minimum.
So they've been expanded from the?
We always had the twenty-four.
You had the twenty-four previously, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I could add something on the parking too, we, in most commercial spaces, we do the, the garage, I mean driveway spots. If you want to do it real tight, you'll do it, you know, eight by sixteen, but nine by eighteen is, is a more typical side. And most of the, like, like Stop &amp; Shop or CVS, most of those spaces are all nine by eighteen.
But you also, and you have to factor in, if you're in front of a garage, well, your bumper isn't up against the door. You know, you've got a couple of feet there. So, so say from eighteen, well, now you're two feet off the door. There's twenty feet. So we made sure if you have a larger vehicle, you know, an SUV, we have a full twenty-four feet to make sure that you have room and you're not sticking out.
John needs twenty-four with his car. I can get by with eighteen with my.
But, but the thing is, in a Stop &amp; Shop parking lot, if you do have a big truck, then, you know, you're going to park further away and you're probably going to take two spots from the back.
Clearly.
But you don't have that option in, in a facility like this.
Right.
You're right.
I've got a question for you, Bill.
Yeah?
Don't we have a rule of so many units per acre?
I'm sure, yes, but that's one of the waivers that they'd have to be asking for. Right? I mean, that's the idea of a forty B. Is there, I think all of them have exceeded whatever the density is.
Well, we, it was three-point-something per acre, I thought.
I, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head. But, you know, they clearly would be asking for a waiver for that. I assume they'd be asking for a waiver.
Yeah.
We are asking for a waiver for that, yeah. We have a real nice development off of Adams Road if you want to, you know, conventional subdivision.
Well, take part of it and put it here.
I think there's a need for both.
Other questions or thoughts from anyone?
Mr. Chair? Yes, yes. Sticking to, to parking, the last meeting, I think it was Mr. McCusker, had kind of emphasized the need. Given the potential for some of the garages at the townhouses to potentially be used for storage, they're tight as it is. There really is a need, there's a perceived need for there to be two spots in the driveway. It looks like there's a, what might be a green space or something between the two driveways in a given duplex. Any consideration to?
Expand.
I, I know, I know there's an aversion to excess pavement, but, you know, potential to put two side-by-side driveway spots.
In this design, we don't have the space for it.
No.
Not, not in this design.
Otherwise, you'd have a, just.
You'd have a lot more pavement.
You'd have to see a pavement in front of that.
More pavement out there. We don't.
It would terrible.
But the, the alternative, most of these townhouses, with the exception of the, the few to the north, don't really have any other parking nearby. Maybe the, the ones at the very bottom as well, but. So if they need any overflow, there's, there's really nothing close by.
Well, it, it depends on your definition of close by.
Yeah.
Right. Like, the units on the north side of the entrance, there's parking spaces.
Right across.
Across from them. The other ones, you know, around the corner.
Yeah, maybe a hundred fifty feet?
Yeah.
Maybe a hundred fifty feet. I don't know if you consider that a long or not. I, some people do. I, I don't, but.
So, you know, to, to that point, I, I've, I've kind of backed off a little bit on it, waiting to see exactly what the design of the townhouses are. If they stay the way they are as presented here with no storage to speak of inside, then at that point, the garages become storage spaces and not garages. So I think the two becomes extremely important. But even, even regardless, I mean, Craftsman Village, they have double spots, if I remember correctly, in front of, in front of each unit. I'm pretty sure that Flint Pond does as well. I'm like eighty percent certain that Flint Pond has double, double spots. It can be done and it'll look very nice. Those are two great, awesome developments, so.
Those are for-sale products, though, right?
They are.
Yeah. So it's not the same. We're, we're, we're trying to keep the rents, you know, at, at a price point here, and we keep expanding, you know. And we also have the ability to put a basement if we thought storage, but we really hate that idea. And I'll tell you the reason why we hate that is because people tend to accumulate a lot of stuff in the basement. And then when they move out, it becomes ours. So we've, we've had that experience before. We don't, we don't really want to have that, you know.
How does the two spots affect the cost? The two spots in front?
Oh, it just expands the whole site. Just expands the whole site.
Well, I mean, I understand the aesthetic piece of it, but you said that there was a cost to that.
Well, of expanding the, the garage and the driveway, just expanding everything, you know.
Making the units bigger.
Bigger garages, bigger houses, just everything larger. We're trying to keep a smaller.
Increase the size. We're just saying the footprint of driveway would need to be.
But we generally would be increasing, generally, generally when you see a bigger driveway, it's a bigger garage, it's a bigger house, generally. Could, could we do it? Otherwise, we, we probably could. We haven't done it, but.
And we can look at having some additional storage space besides the basement. Maybe talk to the architect about having some storage areas, a storage area.
Okay.
And talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, but, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
I mean, we're also looking at, they're talking about green space in between the garages, so just aesthetically.
Yeah.
You think it looks better, but maybe for apartments, I mean, maybe the renters would prefer to have two garage spaces, even though it may not look as beautiful because there won't be as much grass, just a thought, you know, when you're looking at two and three, three-bedroom townhouses that might need an extra garage space.
Right.
Which, and especially since you're saying, I didn't even think about no basements. So where are they going to put their extra stuff, so.
Well, we're hoping they don't accumulate a lot of stuff.
So, you know, here's my concern. Just looking at the, the grouping on the bottom, on the south side. If, you know, somebody has somebody come visit, you know, like in, I don't know. Like, whatever the units are across from seven and eight, or even seven and eight for that matter.
These units, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Where are they going to park if, 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 you know, there's only one spot in front of the unit? And, and the owners in that spot, I mean, I can see them just parking in front of that island that's sitting there.
Let, let's, let's face it, everyone is, is lazy as they can get away with, for the most part. And they're gonna, and they're gonna pull into the first available spot. And if the first available spot there is closest to the clubhouse, that's where they'll park, you know, because there's no restriction that they, you know, it, for the most part, those spots in front of the clubhouse will be empty, for the most part. Because they're not.
Right in front of somebody.
They're not in front of someone's unit. You know, so some people are going to park closest, the very closest to the door that they enter. That's where they're going to park.
I, I think they're going to park right along, they're going to parallel park alongside that, that grass piece between seven and eight.
Yep.
We'll, we'll tow them if they do that. That's not allowed. That wouldn't be allowed.
Will you have signage that states clubhouse attendees only in these spots? Or you can't, I mean, will you be signing that?
Well, we do.
It's going to be kind of like where everybody can find a space.
We'll do whatever's necessary signs, but we absolutely don't want to put any more signs that we, that we want to put because it's, we find that unattractive also.
So I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable designing a project with the intention that you're going to tow cars that are, are, are not parked correctly.
We only have to tow them once, and then it won't happen again.
But it doesn't matter. I, I'm not comfortable designing a project where, where that's part of, of the, one of the parameters is that, you know, we'll, we'll tow. There's no way for us to enforce that. There's no way for the town to enforce that. And, and the result, it becomes a life safety issue. So those are the concerns that I have is, you know, that you've got eight units down there, actually ten units down there, and not a whole lot of parking for, you know, ten families.
Well, I, I respectfully disagree with you.
I know you do.
And, and you're, you're, you're throwing out, you know, theoreticals that someone would park there. You know, someone could park in the middle of Snow Road too, right? And, and anyone could, and just shut off the key and just leave there. Now, that wouldn't happen, and if it did happen, somebody would tow that car because it wouldn't be appropriate. Just the same way as if it was in one of our driving lanes. If you park in the middle of that driving lane, you're going to be towed. You'll be towed once, and it wouldn't happen again. I can tell you that. But we can't, we can't come up and say no one would ever park in the middle of one of our driving lanes, but it would not be allowed, and it wouldn't, would not happen twice.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the design. You know, I, we, we have developments here in town that don't have enough parking, and, and you drive into them. And I'm not going to name because I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings, but we have some developments in town that, that actually look like junk because there's cars parked all over the place because there's not enough parking. So this board, throughout all of the forty Bs we've done, we've, we've stuck very close to the two-point-oh parking spots. So, you know, the requirement is two-two-five in this town. You're at one-point-six-six or one-point-seven, or one-point-seven-four now.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, and this is what happens. When you don't provide the two-point-two-five, you end up in these situations where it's very clear, I think, to somebody like me that there's not enough parking there, and people, as you just said, they're going to park as close to the door as they can, so they're going to pull right alongside that piece of grass and park there.
That would not be allowed. But, but, and, and your point.
Or on the grass.
Yeah, park on the grass. And I'm not talking about somebody parking overnight. I'm talking about somebody who's coming to visit for an hour and a half.
Sure.
There wouldn't be time to tow.
I, I like.
But, but that car is just as much in the way for an ambulance that needs to get to the back of the project, whether they're for, they're for an hour or they're overnight.
I, I appreciate your comments about the parking. Parking is very important to us also. If the parking doesn't work, if, if you live there and you didn't have enough parking space, you'd be looking to move. And so that's not a happy resident, if someone doesn't have adequate parking. So we feel that this parking works, and we would not present a plan that we didn't feel that the parking worked, so.
And as you say, I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
Right. But that's a good point. I was going to make a similar one. It's like, you know, the person that's renting that townhouse, they knows, they know what they're getting when they agree to rent that unit. So if they think they're going to need more parking than that, they know that going in. The flip side of that is, when we look at the one-point-six-six, the one-point-seven-four spots per unit for the apartments, we're now impacting that parking with the townhouse overflow. So that one-point-six-six or one-point-seven-four, depending on how we count the garages, gets squeezed even tighter because we're assuming the townhouses are okay because they've got quote-unquote "two" spots each. If we factor in the overflow, potential overflow, from the townhouses to the spots that we're associating with the apartment units, now the apartment units are getting tighter. And we're getting further away from the two, two spots per unit.
The, the, the other thing on the, on the whole parking thing, and, and, and we're, society is trending towards obers and driverless cars and call-up cars. I, I can see that maybe, I don't know if it'll be in my lifetime, but they, they claim it would be, that, you know, that it'll be cheaper to call up and order a car. So we may have residents here that have no cars. And then, and we'd have, we'd have all this sea of parking there that we've all designed, all this extra parking that wouldn't even get used. So, but we're designing for today, not, not for twenty years for today. So I'll give you that. But we're also, we don't want to over-design on the parking. It's important to us. We think, again, that's the least attractive part of our whole process. We're not chintzing out on the parking to save money. I can tell you that.
This board just approved the development on Pleasant Street at two-point-oh-five spots per unit. I think to Mr. McCusker's point, you know, I think that's where the board might be a little bit more comfortable. I think we at least need to see some more movement in that.
What was the address of that?
That was the.
Fifty-nine Pleasant Street. Because I, I could tell you that, I've had.
Is that the, the field?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's not built?
No.
Okay. So I could tell you that we've had this conversation, the exact same conversation with multiple boards before. And so my argument is that, is that I know what my ratios are on my complex. I have four complexes now. And what I do is I drive over there at ten o'clock on a Wednesday or a Thursday, thinking that we are full. So number one, we're fully occupied. And I'll go, and I, and specifically in Millbury, they, they kept hammering because we had, we have a lot of garages there. I think we have forty-five or fifty garages there. So the ratio was, is, we have a lot more, I don't know, seventy-two units. And I'll go there on a Wednesday night at ten o'clock, and I'll go and I'll count fifteen, twenty empty spots. And, and so I know in my heart and, and then visually that we've got more than enough. So.
That's not a Sunday afternoon with a graduation party and, you know, it's.
We don't have that many Sunday afternoon graduation parties, believe it or not. They're, 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 it's not, it. Our residents are not the same residents that you'd get in one of our subdivisions where you get the, it just, it just doesn't lend itself to that style of living. You know, who moves here is guys like me, who, who's not going to have that party, or the twenty-year-olds that are just leaving the house and, and starting their first, you know, going to their first house out. And they're generally alone or with one roommate, or we get some, we also get a fair amount of people that are separated. And so either the wife or the husband will need a place, and, and there'll be a single. We get a lot of singles.
I, I, I don't want to belabor the parking point anymore. I think, I think we've made it pretty clear. The town, the, the bylaw requires two-point-two-five. So you're going to need a waiver.
Yes.
And, and this board historically has been pretty standard on, you know, we'll go down to the two-point-oh. And I think just what you've heard here, as I've said, is, is some of the reasons why this board's more comfortable with a higher number. And that's, that's that. I mean, so, you know, you, you come up with the best thing that you can. I think there's a lot of other things we need to work on, but I think the message is, is clear where this board has stood with, with, when it comes to parking in, in, in a facility like this.
We, we hear you with that comment, and, and I'm giving you my feedback back because we feel, we feel confident in our position here. I, I want, yeah, so you know that. So I'm trying to convince you and why we think we're right. And, and if you take the position, Steve, we don't agree with you and what you said, you don't agree with what I said, then, then we'll take a hard look.
I think I said that.
I'm still trying. I'm still trying, Bill. I'm still trying. But also, I, you know, I.
Moving on from parking.
Actually, can I just, clarifying question? So the, the townhome units, those include one spot in the garage, correct?
Correct.
And are those part of, are those separate from the thirty-eight garage units?
For the townhouse, we have, well, the total is sixteen townhouses. So we have sixteen garage spaces and sixteen exterior spaces. So we have one in, one out. So it's two per unit.
But you said there were thirty-eight total garage units.
I think he goes in the center.
Oh, 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 yeah, I think you're talking about town, you were, you were saying townhouses.
Well, I, I just wanted to know if that thirty-eight is including the townhome garage units?
No.
Those are the standalone?
Standalones.
Okay.
Standalones. So we have, yeah, eight, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two, plus six, thirty-eight.
So when, when you said three-hundred-and-ninety-one spaces for the apartments, that, that three-ninety-one didn't include the townhouse, garages or driveways?
Nothing to do with the townhouses.
Yeah, okay, right.
We, we, from our last conversation, when you say, well, wait a minute, you have two per townhouse, and that, if you put that into the average, that's skewing your parking per unit because you have a dedicated two per townhouse. So that was skewing our, our parking space per unit. So we separated out the townhouses as the townhouses, the apartment spaces are the apartment spaces. And then it was just a matter of, with the, with the apartment spaces, how do we factor in the use of the standalone garages with those?
Understood.
So like the eleven spaces, what was on the screen now at the top there?
Yeah.
Says eleven parking spaces. Those are apartment parking spaces.
Those are open.
Part of the three-ninety-one.
Those are open to anyone.
Well, sure, no, no, they're open to anyone.
In terms of what we're counting for apartments, yes.
Those are, okay, got it. And then, then in front of the, the clubhouse, there's what, six spaces there, a couple of handicaps?
That was, we were.
Those are all part of the three-ninety-one.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
So for the most part, the, the spaces in front of the townhouses would be exclusive to those townhouses?
Yeah. Well, you're not going to get somebody from the apartment going parking in front of somebody's townhouse in there.
So those are exclusive, we call that, the driveways, you mean? Yeah. We call, we would call that exclusive use area.
Yeah. That's why we, again, back to our original conversation at the last meeting. That's why we separated parking from the townhouses to the parking for, so anything that is not with the townhouse. that is not with the townhouses is exterior spots that are attributed to the apartment buildings.
You guys made a good comment on that and we really couldn't argue that fact. So that's why we changed everything.
Other, other issues, other comments on the board, anybody have?
Yeah.
You alluded to the fire apparatus. Did you see the fire department's comments back on the turn analysis?
I didn't.
They saw back, a quick reply that, that the apparatus, the dimensions of the apparatus used weren't aligned with the towns.
I believe they were bigger.
Yeah, I don't think they said one way or the other, just.
Yeah.
That it should be tweaked to use the towns.
And the issue isn't necessarily the size of the truck. It's the wheelbase. There's a lot of other dimensions on the truck. The length doesn't matter. It's, so you gotta use a template for the right truck.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there is a note from the chief, from December fourth. Hopefully you've got this. If not, continue to make sure you get it. But basically saying it shows a rear mounted ladder truck which does not accurately reflect the grafton fire department apparatus. So you just gotta get the right template.
Okay.
And.
I'll see, yeah. In, in our software, they have different templates for different vehicles. And so I saw the, actually from one of the other apartment complex projects, I saw the size vehicle. And so we went and said, okay, let's find something similar to that. And we got something a little bit bigger and.
So, you know, you know, give Michael, you know, give the chief a call.
Yeah. Find out. I don't think there's a problem.
I don't either, to be honest, but.
Yeah.
At some point, you need to get the right template.
Right.
And do the right drawing.
Is that true that sometimes the bigger vehicles still can't make that turn? I didn't realize that.
Yes, it's not just the length, it's the, you know, the wheelbase.
Turning radiuses.
There's a lot of different factors.
The overhang.
I'm not an expert.
Yeah, overhang off the back of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll reach out and just make sure we get it right.
Yeah. Uh, anyone else? So at this point, I'd like to go over the traffic review, and I think we have somebody from our peer review. Why don't you come?
Come up to the podium.
I was gonna invite you to have a seat.
Oh, come up and have a seat.
Whatever you prefer to do.
Whatever's easiest. Dan, if you wanna move over by me, give him space however you want.
If you could just introduce yourself, because I don't think we've met.
We have not met.
So my name is John Dixon. I'm with TEC. I'm a senior transportation designer there. So I was primarily putting this together, going through this assessment. This is a draft, so to speak. We haven't, you know, we received the updated plans fairly recently. So I know the applicant hasn't had an opportunity for their engineer to respond yet. So we'll wanna see the results of this meeting, response to those comments before we have a finalized one. But these are our initial remarks regarding what we saw through both the traffic impact study and the updated permit site plan with the newest updated plan. Excuse me. So I can walk through just the, sort of the basics of these, a handful of comments. We looked at the study area that was provided, the intersections included, and we concurred that that was an appropriate study area. Item number two, looking at the traffic volume, turning movement counts, they used peak hour counts for those times. There were no twenty-four hour ATRs included.
Actually, can I just stop you for one second?
Sure.
Just for the benefit of the folks in the room that don't have this in front of them. Okay, so there's study area.
Yes.
Which you concurred with, with Snow Road, Worcester Street, Worcester Street and the Country Plaza Shopping Center driveway where the light is, and the site driveway here. Right? So those three areas were studied.
Yep, those were included in the studies. They did do traffic counts at Snow, for Snow Road at Worcester Street and for Worcester Street at the Shopping Center Plaza. They did those during peak hour, morning and evening times. We agreed with the times they, they used as their peak hours for that.
How do they do that?
So what.
Should we ask questions at the end or during?
No, I think we can, this should be a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what, these were turning movement counts. So at each intersection, there were presumably cameras or individually counted where it was measuring how many cars are making each maneuver at these intersections over the course of a two-hour period in the morning and a two-hour period in the afternoon, or evening, I should say. So they did between seven and nine and between four and six.
So somebody's actually sitting there?
More likely, it was probably a camera that was then reviewed later by someone who then counted.
They don't put the black things across the road anymore?
So those, those are a different type of traffic count. Those are twenty-four hour, usually twenty-four hours. They can be actually for any amount of time. And those record through traffic. So those don't give you necessarily which turning movements are being made. So this gives a little bit more detail for an intersection. Those are beneficial though because they give you speeds at areas between intersections. And so they, none of those were performed for this. There's consideration that, you know, there may need to be some potentially, but there's, there's different options. We'll, we'll get into that with a later one about, a later comment about the site distance. But. So, yeah, we're not looking for any response on the traffic counts themselves. They did use a seasonal adjustment factor. So what that is, is during different months of the year, there are some months where there's more traffic and generally months where there's less traffic. This was conducted in January. It was after schools reopened. So we, you know, we're, if, if schools hadn't reopened, we'd be concerned that the volumes could be artificially low. But they were after schools reopened. And they used, they increased the volumes by 1.09 percent. That's, so that was because January tends to have lower traffic volumes than other months. MSDOT uses those factors or provides those factors. So there was, based on the type of road and the urban or rural setting, is how those factors are calculated. So they actually used a factor slightly higher than what we would recommend. So we see that as being more conservative and we don't have an issue with that. So the, number four, the hours studied, project the overall effect on the roadway. We couldn't, oh, yeah, we concurred with the, the hours that were selected. So.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I saw that their peak, their, their peak trip generation, peak hour generation is about ninety-five trips in the morning and a hundred and twenty in the afternoon. How do they, how do you calculate that number? I know the daily rate is based upon statistics in the IT manual.
Yep.
Or how do you get to ninety-four?
So, yeah, we'll actually get into that a little bit. So the traffic generated primarily comes from the number of units when it comes to residential. So what they would do is take the number of units for the, for each type of building, use that from the IT generation manual, factor into that how many units there are, and that will give you your peak hour trips in, peak hour trips out, daily trips in, daily trips out. So it's an estimate based off of, you know, immense amounts of data that the Institute of Transportation Engineers has compiled over time.
So the IT manual has like a formula that, that tells you what the peak hour trip is?
Yep.
Based upon the number of units?
Yes. So actually, I believe in their appendix, they have their formulas, their, their data statistics and their, their traffic analysis. So we were able to confirm those.
It just struck me as low, given that there's fifteen hundred daily trips, only have ninety-four in the peak hour. It just seems unusual to me. You've got how many, there are how many units studied? Two hundred and sixty-eight?
Two hundred units. Yep.
Only ninety-four people are gonna be leaving in the peak hour?
These are the projected new numbers?
The additional.
These are the old numbers before they changed their plan. Their traffic study was based upon the original plan. But based on two hundred and sixty-eight units, they're projecting only ninety-four AM peak hour trips. And some of those are even coming into the project, not leaving. So.
I mean, I imagine some will go out the other way towards the railroad station.
This is total. This is the total number of trips leaving the projects.
Oh.
At eight AM or whatever the peak hours.
Okay.
Right. And you, you will have a good amount of trips on either side of that peak hour. What we're really trying to look at is the hour that has the most impact. So there will be people leaving, you know, before seven, seven to eight, eight to nine. And with your peak hour, you're actually gonna look at fifteen-minute intervals to see which one has the highest, the highest amount of four or fifteen-minute intervals all put together. So, well, that's actually an item number five. We did note that they, the, the trip generation didn't use the most recent data, used the tenth edition, not the eleventh edition, which has been available for about a year. So we did, we did note that in here.
But the tenth edition actually is more conservative, isn't it? I, I've read both and from what I can tell, the eleventh edition actually has fewer trips.
The, the eleventh edition does lean more towards multimodal trips in some areas, certainly. So we, we did say in here that we don't have an issue with it, particularly where the number of units has gone down since this was done. But if it is updated, it should use more recent information. So that's, that's in number five, which actually, that's about where we are. I'm sorry, not number five, that is. Number eight, the site trip generation. So essentially, we're saying the reduction in the development density from the old plan to the new one does appear to offset the minor differences in the trip generation rates because of the difference in manual use. We did, we did agree with the choices that were made for which type of development using, there's land use codes. So there's, there's this data for all types of land uses, whether it's, you know, industrial, residential. And so the ones that were used for this were the multifamily housing mid-rise for the apartments and multifamily low-rise for the townhouses. And we, we do believe that those were appropriate selections for it. If we go back to the background growth rate, this is, this is where, it's, it's one of those situations we, we would encourage a higher percentage per year in the growth rate, based on what we were able to see from intersections more closely related, the way it was factored as a rural arterial versus an urban arterial. We believe that rate should be higher. But again, where there's been a reduction in the number of units, that's probably reducing it more than that would increase it. One of the, the, number six in our assessment is the intersection site distance. So this one, what that is, is essentially where the driveway is going in. You need to have sufficient distance in either direction to see what's coming to make your left turn or your right turn safely. There is a thirty mile per hour speed limit on the road. When there's a thirty five, thirty mile per hour speed limit, your design speed or what you're using for your, what you're assuming the speed is, is thirty-five. You increase it by five miles an hour, assuming that people are going above the speed limit, unless you do conduct in a traffic study with automatic traffic reporters that would determine the actual speed people are traveling at. So because of that, we want to look at this more as a thirty-five mile per hour road unless there's data to say that it's, people are actually going the speed limit. Given that there is sufficient stopping site distance on the road, which is two hundred feet, or I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty feet, that's not your ideal stopping distance, that's your minimum stopping distance. The ideal stopping distance comes from your sightlines, where there's three hundred and fifty-five available right now, looking to the right. We would wanna see that either, we would wanna see that increase to four hundred feet. So what that essentially means is someone could stop if you pulled out in front of them. They would have enough space. But we want people to be able to have enough site distance to make safe maneuvers, to not have to require someone to stop in an emergency situation. And typically, more than that, what that results in realistically is delays with people leaving. People are, you know, getting to the end of the driveway, they stop, then they move forward a little bit to try and see a little better. And so you have people getting closer to that edge of the travel lane. It's, it's a behavior that you, you know, can lead to slightly more dangerous situations, but ultimately can also just cause delay for anyone else trying to get out behind them, just where it's, so our recommendation would be for the designers to find a way to increase that site distance, potentially.
So that's, that's basically pulling out of the proposed driveway.
Yep.
Taking a left, going towards Worcester Street?
Yes. We'd wanna see, I believe it was, yes.
I mean, what, is there a tree in the way or is there a hump in the way or?
It's the curvature of the road.
Yeah, so. There were pictures in their assessment. Let me see. Was looking to the right. So this, the, the issue is for making the left turns, but it's looking towards the right.
Oh, looking towards the right.
Yeah.
Okay.
For left turns, you need to have site distance in both directions.
Yep.
So we would recommend that that be looked at as, for ways to increase that. Or potentially, if there is a study done to show that there's lower speeds, that could verify that what's there is sufficient. Or there could potentially be ways to reduce the speeds on Snow Road if they are higher than the posted speed limit there.
Now, didn't your company do Pleasant Street for us?
Yes.
They basically, that person basically almost told us what bush to take down.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, he said, he gave a certain areas on, and it was quite a ways down the street to correct.
Yeah.
I think that was for a different turn. That wasn't the project turn. That was at Sunset Street or something.
Well, that was still traffic, though.
Right.
No, you're right. It did, where sightlines could be improved, he did give us, you know, very specifics, you know, the bottom of Elmwood. Where's that?
Was it Elmwood?
Yeah, Elmwood, Elmwood, Elmwood and Pleasant.
Yeah, so, yeah, it did start down in Elmwood. It did start at Pollard. And then, what's the hell right across the street from it?
Church?
Christopher.
Church Street.
Christopher.
Christopher.
Oh, Christopher.
Right on, Christopher. Okay, okay.
We, we can provide more details in our final.
Yep.
This is our draft one. The other option two is potentially if the site driveway moves in other iterations of their plan, that could also resolve it. So there's a lot of variables that could change that site distance.
So, you know, to, to Peter's point, so you, what you're saying here is, you would like to see the sightline increase from, whatever, to four hundred.
Yep.
So then, you know, I, I think it would really help the board to understand what it would take to do that. Right? If, if the road curves and it's something that's, that probably can't be done, well, fine, say that. Because maybe it isn't the road curves, maybe it's the fact that there's a tree in the way, or, you know, maybe there's just a small rise that maybe could be taken down. And again, Pleasant Street and also the one down and up the road, there was things stated that become input to our highway department.
Yep.
Again, so let's just say there was a rise that was causing the sightline problem. Maybe this developer doesn't fix the rise, but maybe our highway department does.
Right.
So, so that's the information.
There'd be some coordination there, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure I'm, I'm reading this correctly and I'm understanding you. So pulling out from the development onto Snow Road, looking to the right, looking to the north.
North?
Yes.
And saying, because that's.
Right.
Pretty flat and straight is so.
Your traffic report said it was three fifty-five.
Yeah, these were the numbers that were in your traffic.
Okay.
So this was the, what was done, I'm sorry, through the chair. But this is the, these are the numbers that were provided by the applicant's.
Okay.
Engineer, as far as what the site distances are.
Okay.
As the reviewer, we didn't go out and measure them ourselves.
Right.
There's certainly, you know, we can give recommendations on how to do it. If, if the driveway moves, if there are other driveways involved, that would be one way to do it. As it stands right now, you know, the speed limit is thirty. If that's what people are actually traveling at, then there's no issue. So that's, that's, there's, there's a few different.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it right.
Nobody goes to speed limit. You know that, we know that.
Right. That's why we generally assume five miles per hour over the speed limit is what we would design for or assess with.
So can I, so, so you're saying that our engineer says we have three fifty-five and you recommend four hundred? Is that what I'm reading? Is that what you said?
I believe that's the number they had. I can, me.
Just wanna write down the rights.
Page nine of the traffic study.
Okay. Oh, all right. Oh, all right, so now.
Page nine of yours.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, he, he said it's in there, fine.
Okay, so now we can talk to our, our team about that.
That's all?
And we typically see um, speed studies in our projects. So I think that might be something you, you may want to ask the developer to do is to just collect the actual speeds. We're just assuming thirty-five is the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, but it could be higher, or it could be lower. And it really doesn't cost a lot, it costs like five hundred bucks for them to have a company do this, there's companies that do this, they go out there, they put the, the black strips down. They collect the data every two or three days, it's all automatic.
I know, I'd feel better with, I'd think a better count.
Absolutely.
Um, and that'll also give more consistent K factors, so you know exactly, so when you, when you do those studies, you also have a much better understanding of how many cars are traveling or what percentage of your cars are traveling during the peak hour. So that helps to refine the, the peak hour number as well. So. Give me a, lost uh, the site distance, yep. So yes, there were three hundred and fifty-five. So the, the next topic was the vehicle crash data. Um, the study area of Snow Road at Worcester Street, um, in the traffic impact report showed that there was one crash over a, I want to say, four-year period. Um, a, a quick, uh, sorry, over, yeah, over a four-year period from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one. Um, I, I looked at the Mass DOT crash portal, or impact is what they call it now. Um, showed that there may be si- uh, quite a bit more there. Um, so I would recommend uh, that that be updated, um, even just for those years, but to make sure that crashes that are on the approaches to that intersection are included. Um, I looked at, you know, a one hundred foot radius of the center of that intersection, and there were more crashes showing. Um, you know, we'd like to see what crashes are being considered included in the appendix too, just to, to be able to reference that. Um, and that's going to play a big factor in the crash rate.
And, and this is at the intersection of one twenty-two and Snow Road?
Yes. Yep.
We're within a hundred feet of that, or is?
Well, that, even just from the center of that intersection and then you have quite a bit, a hundred feet isn't actually going out that far. So we would recommend looking really at the approaches um, to that intersection. So, you, you know, if someone, you know, generally you would expect someone would pull into the striped median if they're going to turn left on Snow Road. Um, but if someone doesn't and they stop right in that lane, because technically you're not supposed to pull into a striped median. You know, it's, that's kind of a, is it safer? Yes, are you supposed to? Technically, no. But, um, you know, there could be instances where there's more um, rear ends coming from people stopping there. So you want to make sure that, you want to see what's happening on the approaches, or is it backing up because people are making dangerous maneuvers? And then other people are not expecting traffic to be stopped there, you know, hitting other cars. So just looking for those trends to make sure there's no crash trends that are already there, that would then be exemplified by a higher volume.
Is data for twenty-two and twenty-three not yet available, or is that part of what you were seeing?
So typically, we like to see, we don't, typically you wouldn't include the last three years from Mass DOT's information. Um, you can get more up-to-date information, th- those are considered incomplete for three years. Um, but, you know, crash reports from the police department could, you know, provide better detail and better information of more recent crashes.
So this isn't from the police department, this is from Mass DOT?
Yeah. Yeah, it's stated in their report, it was from the Mass DOT, so I'm assuming it's from the Mass DOT crash portal, but it didn't say that explicitly.
And are those adjusted for COVID?
No, uh, crash rates generally aren't, crap, the number of crashes generally aren't adjusted for COVID. Um, crashes actually generally increased during COVID because people had more open space on the roads and were going faster.
The classic, we're fogging up too.
So just um, a general comment, um, on, on the review that you're doing for us, right?
Yep.
When we talk about crash data, um, in, in my, as far as, I'm sorry, I think there's going to be a significant revision to what you've given us. So when we talk about crash data, what I'd really like to know is, how many crashes were there? Now, I know I could go in here and find it, but we're, we're kind of relying on you to kind of break that down to us, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully when you come back, you know, I, I understand the recommendation right now is for the applicant to, to revisit what they've done for crash data and public numbers. Hopefully you guys talk offline, you agree, this is the crash data, then my expectation for you as the expert is to kind of boil that down to something for me, the non-expert, to understand, you know. These are the number of crashes that we see here and that sort of stuff, so just.
So, yeah, so in, in just that time period, just in a, a small hundred foot radius, um, there were fifteen crashes.
Over?
Over that same four-year period, where there was one listed in the report.
So, okay, so you, so you saw data showing fifteen.
Yes.
They reported one, okay.
And that, that area that I used would be expanded even beyond that realistically.
About four a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. And then, should, should somebody be talking to the police department to get their numbers? I think that's what's been better than packed.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, to, to have more up-to-date numbers, the, the police reports will give you more recent crashes than the Mass DOT portal can.
Okay, so I, you know, that, that probably should be part of your recommendation as well, or, okay.
I know a friend of mine lost his pickup, somebody came off of Snow Road, clocked him right at that intersection, but I, I'm going to ask him tomorrow what year. So, I'm curious if he's the one.
He's famous.
Um, so, so with that, we, we noticed in the crash rate worksheets that there were inconsistencies with the volumes put in. Um, inconsistencies with the K factor, so we recommended that those be updated by the applicant's uh, team. Uh, so the site trip generation calculations, uh, is kind of what we, we touched on a little bit earlier, as far as how those were created. We, we did agree with the methodology used behind that. Um, the, the traffic patterns, however, um, essentially once those numbers are generated, there's, you know, different methods to determining where are those cars going to turn? Are they all turning left out of there to go to Worcester Street, or half of them turning left? Um, so the methodology used in the report was based on existing trends in that, on that road. Um, we, we don't agree with that methodology for this road because it is primarily residential. Um, that having, most of the trips going north of there should be to residences. Anything north of the development site, there will be some cut-through traffic. But primarily, it's a residential area, most people traveling for work are going to go to the highway. They're either going to Worcester Road and traveling east or west and, you know, either going up to get to, you know, the highway or traveling from there. Um, what we recommend is that it be revised to use origin, uh, so origin destination is what we, we would like to see for that. So, uh, what that does is it takes census data that's available, that says, you know, this many people who live, you know, in Grafton or are going to Worcester, this many people are going, are, you know, are traveling to, you know, Boston each day. And then from that determine, you know, which ones are the most impactful, what path would those people actually be taking? Um, the concern is that more trips are going to the north of the development, and that's, you know, where if more trips are going south, that's going to more heavily impact the level of service at the intersection of Snow Road and Worcester Street.
So right now, the, the data that, that they provided for us, what percentage do they have going north versus south?
So they showed for their morning peak hour, they had thirty-three vehicles traveling north and thirty-eight traveling south. So say around sixty percent headed towards Worcester Street. Um, and we suspect that that would be higher if you used origin destination methodology.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you're going to the train station, you're going to go north though.
Oh, yeah.
And if you're going to go to Shrewsbury at peak hours, it, it might be, it might make sense to go to Worcester Street, but it doesn't. Because it's going to be a circus there. You, you'd go East Street, I mean, you'd go Snow Road to East Street to the intersection at Route thirty, because you've got lights to guide you. There's no light to let you out at Snow Road.
But there'll be a turning lane.
At least your turning right.
It's just a right hand, well, we haven't.
They propose putting in a turning lane.
I haven't seen it, so we have no diagram of it.
Yeah, my, my gut tells me that, that it just seems like more people are going to go left.
More left.
South.
South.
Probably, you mean to Worcester Street.
More than what they're saying, I, I think, yeah.
Well, I, 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 I would guess that, but I'm not a traffic person, so.
So, so you're proposing that they use a different methodology to come up with that?
Right, and I, I, with the, uh, you know, given the expectation that more would probably be going south to Worcester Street. And we'd want to see what that impact would have on that intersection as far as capacity level of service. Which actually.
Did you, uh, I'm just curious, did, did you have the time to drive it during peak hours?
Um, I was able to get over there and, and watch what happened during peak hours. Um, it, you know, it didn't seem that there was too much queuing from the signal up to the intersection, but there were some, some concerning maneuvers that people used getting in and out of Snow Road.
That's the only way you can get out. I did it, I, I did it, I did it at four-ten today. I went up Snow Road, turned around, came back.
Yeah.
Hit my stopwatch on the, uh, on my phone. It took me, uh, and I, and I was quick, it took me fifty-one seconds to get out. But I had to pull out in front of a trailer track, truck heading south, and I used the light and almost got T-boned, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
So I would have been a good minute and a half, two minutes, if I did it the correct way, and I hope the police aren't, uh, watching right now.
So that actually does bring us into the next one, the, um, the results of their, their traffic analysis, the capacity analysis. Um, one of the things that was concerning on here was the intersection, um, the, the level of service with no, no build. So the way this is broken down, there's the existing, the no-build situation where, you know, what it would be, um, in, I believe it was twenty I'm not sure what the designer was, it was a, I believe it was a seven-year design period? But what it, oh, sorry, twenty-twenty-eight. So what it would be in twenty-twenty-eight if the development was not put in, and what it would be in twenty-twenty-eight if it is put in. Um, currently it operates at a level of service E. Um, the level of service goes from A to F, so it's, you know, D is considered acceptable, E is questionable. Uh, but it is a low-volume roadway, so E is not highly concerning with a no-build scenario, and, and that provides a delay according to this study in the morning of forty-six seconds. So it's saying essentially it's going to take about forty-six seconds on average for someone to turn out of Snow Road. Um, with no, no-build situation, that increases over the years just from general increases in traffic to forty-nine point five. And with the build, it changes from level of service E to level of service F. Um, level of service F is kind of an odd situation where there's nothing worse than it, and things can get worse and worse. So level of service F doesn't really tell you much, it just means it's worse, it's in the worst category we have, but that could be, you know, a little bit or a lot. Um, so that's when you really want to look at delay. The delay, um, in the proposed for the AM peak was the most concerning, um, at a hundred and sixteen seconds is what your expected delay would be during your morning peak hour, and that is more than double the no-build scenario. And so the, the concern there is that could be increased further if more trips are taking a left down to Worcester Street. Um, so, you know, one, a hundred and sixteen seconds, that's almost two minutes that you're expecting to be at that stop sign. Now, um, what wasn't included in here was the, uh, the queues. So there's, there's no queuing analysis in here, if we would like to see that, because that's going to tell you, are you at the stop line for two minutes? Or are you waiting to get to the stop line for two minutes? And that does have an impact on, on driver behavior. Because if you're at the stop sign for two minutes, you are getting to a point where you might make a more risky decision entering into the flow of traffic. So that's something, that, that is a, you know, and ways that could be mitigated, potentially having a right turn, separated right turn and left turn lanes there.
How do you count it if you've got two cars in front of you?
So that would show, um, so your, your delay would be the amount of time you're waiting included with how long it takes you to make that maneuver.
And queuing also would tell you if this queue that's at the intersection is blocking driveways on Snow Road. So that might actually make it harder for people who already live on Snow Road to get out of the driveways in the morning. And if I'm correct, the software that does this, right?
Yes.
They could do this, they, and most traffic studies do include a queuing analysis when there's, especially when there's, uh, failing intersections like this. So it's kind of surprising they didn't include that, I, that's, that's a really a big, big thing that they need to do.
We do like to see that, yeah, um, to know what those queues will be. The other part that the queue would play into, uh, the intersection with the stop and shop, if that starts to queue. Um, it didn't seem to be queuing a lot from what I saw. But if it does start queuing, that's going to delay people getting out of Snow Road further, if it queues all the way up to Snow Road. It didn't seem to be doing that when I saw during peak hours, but the analysis should give a better idea of what would be expected under future conditions. So, that's another thing we'd like to see is, you know, if, if you have queues backing up that far, now there is no left that you can take if there's someone who wants to take a right turn, potentially trying to get past you in, in some manner.
They'll back up, they'll back up past Harris Road, which is across from Snow Road going south.
Yeah, so.
So you can't get out, if you want to go south out of Snow Road, you can't do it.
So, so this delay that's included in here doesn't account for any queues from that signal.
Okay.
So if there's queuing from that signal, this, this amount of delay could be increased. So that is, you know, what type of mitigation that looks like, probably, you know, potentially having left and right turn lanes at the end of Snow Road so people who are taking right turns can move past someone who's waiting to take that left. Um, potentially you could look at a signal warrant, I don't know, you know, off, I, I won't say that it wouldn't pass for it, but it, it would, you know. I don't think it's likely would meet for your, your immediate volume warrants. There are other warrants though for crashes, depending on how many crashes are correctable by a signal. But it, it doesn't seem to me like a strong candidate for a signal. But, you know, a, a warrant analysis could, could, you know, better determine that. But having left and right turn lanes, uh, potentially having a left turn lane off of Worcester, uh, Street onto Snow Road where there's already a painted median there, if there's enough width, there could be a left turn lane there that could also help, um, mitigate some crashes and doesn't help the people getting off of Snow Road necessarily, but could help the intersection overall. So we, we did bring that up, um.
John, can I, um, ask you a couple of questions though, about the geometry of this intersection? Um, and just for your benefit, this is probably the biggest public safety concern with this project, is the existing intersection of Snow Road and one twenty-two. And a lot of it has to do with the geometry where the Snow Road approach to one twenty-two is at an angle. And to look, and to be able to safely get, to turn left safely, you have to kind of crane your neck.
Yeah.
And, and if you add a right turn lane, isn't that going to make it worse? Because isn't that going to block the site distance for someone taking a left if there's a car on your right? I would think that that would be a problem. And as I, and I just, I guess I, I, and we haven't seen any proposals, I don't think, right, to um, to change the geometry to make this more of a ninety-degree angle? Um, is that something you can address tonight, or is that something that you can address in a subsequent memo? I, I think that's a really important thing that needs to get, get brought out.
Yeah, so that, that's one thing, you know, if we can have, you know, numbers that we're confident in and have those queuing to look at. You know, if you have a large queue and people can't get to the right lane anyway, then it may not be that beneficial. Um, but the, the geometry, uh, particularly the slope is also a big concern there, it's coming down at quite a slope. Um, so between that and the, the skewed angle, or the, you're, uh, re- realigning that. I don't know offhand what the, the right-of-way area is along there, how much the town has on either side to work with realigning that. But it's certainly an option there, um, even potentially, you know, having some separation, some sort of median in there. But, um, as far as the concern about, I'm sorry.
Sorry, is that, is that Housing Authority property?
Yeah.
So there's a possibility that town could work with Housing Authority to do it.
But regardless, e- even if it wasn't, we need you as the expert to identify that, look, the geometry of this thing is bad and it makes it this bad or that, you know, whatever it is. You know, and, you know, you know, to make it better, would straighten it out, that sort of thing. Again, you know, that doesn't. Again, you know, that doesn't mean this developer's gonna do that, and it doesn't mean, but, but we need to know that so that it can be part of, of what we're doing. Um, and then the other thing I think that goes along with that, the thing that drives me the most crazy is right at Snow Road is a lane drop. Right, it goes from two lanes northbound one forty to one.
Yes.
Right there with almost like no merge. Right, so, um, you know, I, I, all of that, it seems like it kind of should play into it, and, and to me, the layman, I know that, that, that's just dangerous now, right? And, and so, you know, that's why we need your expertise to kind of, to kind of, kind of boil that down, um, especially now that we're adding a whole bunch of traffic to that.
Sure, sure, and, um, you know, there's, there's certainly increased challenges when you have multiple lanes, so whether that means extending that, but it could also be reducing where those lanes merge together.
Yeah.
Um, making it a narrower cross width there for, for Worcester Street. That could, could be a beneficial aspect to it. Um, to the, the point about where the right turn could block the left turn where they're looking, you know, you can't have, you know, essentially have that stop a little further back to continue to provide that space. But if it's such a dramatic delay for left turns versus right turns, that the right turns are pretty much flowing out and leaving that lane open while the left turns end up taking their time, that's not as big a concern. Um, but, you know, you do wanna make sure there's appropriate sitzings, I know, right now, there's a utility pole right in the middle of that, that would, you know, have to be relocated, whether you're widening or whether you're just going directly into it, that's gonna need to be relocated to some extent. Um, so, you know, teeing up that intersection, whether that's part of mitigation or whether that's from the town would, would improve that intersection. Um, you know, potential narrowing of Worcester Road would help that. Um, the, the grade, I, I really don't like the grade it's coming in on, that's, that's a tricky one to change, though, um, without going quite a ways back, uh, so.
Yep.
Um, but if you are able to narrow Worcester Road a little more at that area, that gives you a little more space beyond there to work with, reducing that grade or transitioning out of that grade better.
Right, but, you know, again, we, we don't need to engineer this now, but, you know, that's the sort of information that we're really looking for you to provide.
Sure.
And, and any proposed changes for that intersection would ultimately have to be done by MassDOT, right?
They're approved by them.
Approved by them.
Approved by them. Yep.
Yeah, so you, you would need to.
Because it's state highway, so they have to be included.
Yeah, yeah, so you, you'd need state highway access permits to, to do that, and they'd have to approve the work being done, whether that's part of mitigation or whether that's the town doing that improvement. Um, MassDOT would be involved, and, you know, if you're coming to them with it, they're probably not paying for it, but there's potential you could, you know, ask them to.
How far north did you travel? Did you go under the pike and then over the tracks?
No, um, I traveled up to it so I could see under the bridge.
Oh, as soon as you go under the pike, then you go over the railroad tracks, you go up a little hump, it just, it's very narrow there, I meant to measure it today and I forgot when I went up there.
Yeah.
Um. Because a lot of traffic's thirty percent, you said, would go towards.
More than thirty percent.
Uh?
More than thirty percent.
Was it more than, well, yeah, well, that's the way to the train station.
Mm-hmm.
And that Pleasant Street project, when they had to totally redo the Pollard.
Right.
Intersection, I mean, they redid that whole, was MassDOT?
No.
No, because that was back on the town side.
Yeah, so they redid that whole intersection, because that was a very, um, complicated sightline for that, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's gonna look great, it's gonna be much safer, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, from, you know, if, if we're anticipating more trips are going towards Worcester Road, that may or may not fall into any part of mitigation, that might be another thing where it's, you know, the town would wanna look at that and update that, potentially, if there are as many trips going north as, as the report they provided indicates, then that could be something to look at from a mitigation perspective.
Yeah.
I don't think the town's gonna improve anything.
Right.
I, I think it might be them.
But we, you know, it starts, it starts with the engineers making the recommendations and telling us where to get done.
Correct, yeah.
And, you know, to, to, you know, make a rec, to, to look at which side of that road where is really gonna need the improvements is gonna depend a lot on that origin destination, are, you know, is there an impact north of that area like it's saying in here, or is that impact really on Worcester Street? So, we'd like to see better numbers on that, and, and potentially it is, so.
And then, w- w- once, so we'll get adjusted numbers on that, right? And then, from those adjusted numbers, you can do the analysis of what if it's ten percent the other way, right, or an additional ten percent? Or that their split is different, right, you can do that, like that tolerance, or, I don't know what you call it, but.
Yeah, the, the.
Different scenarios of, based on, because we know the numbers are low, or we assume they're, they're low. But it is an estimate, so we want, I think, the sort of severe, the levels of severity of how bad it could be.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, we can absolutely look into that when we, we have those updated numbers and see what that would be for, as far as mitigation would go, so. Uh, but, yeah, the, the delay, sorry, just back to, we're at the delay on Worcester Street, or on Snow Road at Worcester Street, is, is probably, you know, one of the, the highlights of, of our concerns. And that doubling for the morning peak hour, or more than doubling is, is a concern. So we did put that we, the applicants engineer, uh, should perform a left turn lane warrant for Worcester Street and evaluate if two lanes at Snow Road would be necessary to reasonably manage the delay. Um, we also looked at the parking analysis provided. Uh, so this is, it is, uh, it's interesting. So, um, as I'm sure you all know, two point two five parking spaces, um, is required by the zoning laws for multifamily dwellings, and two parking spaces are required for one or two family dwellings. Uh, so we looked at the, the updated site plan, so the one that was shown tonight. Um, with them combined, it was one point seven six, um, as mentioned earlier, for the apartments itself is one point seven, uh, four. The, the ITE rate for the land use code of, um, low to mid-rise apartments has a rate of one point two, that's better mentioned in the applicant's report. That is generally, you know, low to mid-rise apartments isn't quite as suburban as this setting would be. That's, that would typically be a little more, or a little more, you know, with, it would generally have more walkable trips. Um, so what, our, our, based on our experience, what we like to see, um, at TUC is one point seven five. That's our, the number we like to see for these type of developments, but certainly that's up to, um, the, the board if they prefer, you know, if, if the preference is for two, that's, you know, um, just, but in our experience, we generally recommend one point seven five for this type of development in this type of setting. So, uh, that was what we had for the impact analysis. And then our site plan comments for the transportation aspect of that. Uh, we did look at the path of the fire truck, um, and we would just defer to the fire department to verify that the truck is accurate in its dimensions. Um, I know that was brought up earlier, and wheelbase overhang with all place factors into that. Um, so the whole turning envelope is, is what it's called in your auto turn. Um, so you're looking at where the wheels are, you know, you, your wheels might stay on the road, but if your overhang goes over and hits something, that's, you know, that's a concern, so, um, it did look like the whole envelope was shown on that plan, but if it's not the right vehicle, that needs to be looked at. Um, we did put in here, the applicant should explore potential for a gated emergency access driveway, um, potentially through the Grafton Water District, or, uh, potentially to the Plaza, but some way to have a second means of entrance for emergency response vehicles, um, or a second means of entrance for people who live there potentially, but the bigger concern from the transportation side of it is emergency access. Making sure that people, emergency responders can get in there when necessary. Uh, so that's, that's comment number fourteen. Um, we recommend that traffic control be established for some of the internal intersections, particularly right where the boulevard-style entrance ends. Um, even if it's low volume, it's, you know, beneficial to have some form of traffic control, um, essentially picking one of the approaches to have a stop sign to, or to make sure that there aren't going to be those conflicts where there's multiple people, no one knows who should go. Are they treating it like always stop, are they treating it like yield control? So some clarification on that. Um, we did mention the six parking stalls in front of the Clubhouse building, where those are in an intersection. Uh, we recommend that those should be relocated out of the intersection. Uh, we also would recommend that a narrative about package deliveries. Um, you know, where are trucks intending to stop if you have a large, um, you know, a, a large building like that where you're making potentially multiple trips from your Amazon or UPS truck to your truck back up to your truck to, to different residences within that building, your delivery truck could be parked there for a fair amount of time wherever that spot may be, so having some sort of designation, at least on plan, and some understanding of where those trucks would be to not impact flow during those times.
John, on that topic, um, I was struck by how there really wasn't any kind of loading area in front of any of the buildings.
Exactly.
And, um, I mean, Steve, you made the point about how people are gonna be using, you know, Ubers and things like that more often, uh, but yet, there's nowhere for an Uber to pull off, or, you know, I, I would typically see, in other projects I work on, a loading area in front of each building where a car can kind of pull off and not be blocking somebody. In this case, any delivery truck or Uber is gonna be blocking of, of space and, and, and blocking the drive aisle. So now you've got a twenty-four-foot drive aisle that's gonna be blocked pretty regularly when there's Ubers and, and, uh, delivery vehicles, you know, people Uber eats, um, you've got all the package deliveries. There's just a lot of temporary trips that come in and out of these projects. Um, so that's just something for the board to consider, if you wanna ask the applicant to consider that kind of design improvement, it's kind of a, like a site design issue more than a traffic issue, but, um.
But I, I think that sort of goes back to also some of our concerns around the, the townhome parking and just the, the traffic through there, because if there's a Amazon truck stopping at multiple townhomes, that creates a bottleneck that, you know, theoretically spill out on the Snow Road.
How do you handle a fifty-three-foot moving trailer with a tractor moving somebody's furniture in? How do you, you know, we, we're just discussing before the forty-two-foot, forty-three-foot fire truck, never mind a, a moving trailer.
Are you asking that?
Yeah, uh, I, I don't know, because I don't know apartments.
Generally, so, number one is, the average apartment's about thousand square feet, so we really don't get the fifty-three-foot trailers. We generally get the straight jobs, the twenty-four-foot straight jobs, because there physically isn't that much space to put that much stuff, it's not like a single-family twenty-five, thirty-five hundred square foot home.
But still, when that twenty-four footer's loading or unloading, it, yeah, my guess is it's gonna be parked probably right in front of the two handicap spots, um, in front of the buildings, I would imagine, right? So it's just gonna be parked in the road.
Those are real, real short-term windows that those are done. Really quick, it really, we don't have issues with those, and, and the practical matter is, we don't have issues like that.
How, how many? Yeah.
Well, well, I mean, if you drive in one of these developments that are there, you're typically not gonna encounter a moving truck there, but it happens, yes. But it's not, but it's not a frequent event.
But it, but it does happen.
It happens, absolutely.
You know, and it just seems like that should be something that's, that's accounted for. And, and likewise with the package delivery, I assume there'll be a package delivery room, so Amazon pulls up, dumps one pile of packages somewhere in the building.
Yes.
But still, it, it seems like there should be someplace for, you know, a truck like that to, to, to be doing its thing, alright.
Are you envisioning mail and package delivery at each of the apartment buildings, or is that all centralized through the clubhouse?
We've done it both ways, and, and, um, uh.
TBD.
I'm sorry?
To, to be determined, or?
Yeah, we really haven't nailed that down, but I, we've done it both ways, like I say, um.
Well, I, I mean, I think that matters for parking purposes.
Hmm. I, I, I mean, you know, if there's gonna be one central place for mail for the whole project, and now we've gotta know where that is, it's gotta be parking for, that sort of thing, so.
Hmm.
If it's in the building, not so much, but.
I, I'll check the plans, and I'll have the answer on the next meeting.
So what's, what, um, um, John?
John.
John, sorry. I, I have, it takes me three, four times with a name, so.
Oh, no worries, I'll answer anything, just look at me, so.
What, what's your estimate on how big of a truck can come into this development?
So, um.
I mean, somebody moving from California, and you must get them, or some other state, and they just call Beacons, or if they're even still in business, or one of those, Mayflower or one of those, and they, uh, I, I know you're, I know you're saying you put it in a straight truck and bring it, but they got half a, a load that's, and they say, well, we'll just run it over there with the tractor-trailer, then, God, what do you do?
Well, they also break down loads, I've seen them do that. They'll take a, the tractor-trailer and break it into two straight jobs to deliver. That, that happens.
No, I imagine, but then they probably tell the customer, you've gotta pay extra for that.
Well, anything's possible.
Just drive the tractor-trailer over there.
I, 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 and I might be.
If it doesn't fit, it doesn't work, you don't do it, bottom line.
Or they run over curb and.
Uh, hopefully not.
And trees.
In, in my experience, the, the typical design vehicle, which is, you know, what you'd say the largest vehicle, would, would probably be about a single-unit thirty-foot truck would be typical design vehicle for a development like this. So, you, you wouldn't expect tractor-trailers in there necessarily? I think it's, all right, the, the single unit is probably what you would expect to be your largest vehicle that you'd allow in there.
But your point is, is well-taken, because you, you never know what truck's gonna show up, and you're not gonna tell the truck driver you can't come in, the truck driver's gonna try to come in.
I think.
But in, in the same vein, I don't know that we can plan for it either, so.
Right.
Well, the question is, do we plan for the one in one thousand, you know, or the one in one, in two hundred? Or do we plan on, you know, the one in three, or the one in six, you know? I'm talking about frequencies. If we're planning for the one in one thousands, then everything is way overdesigned everywhere.
So, you know, to, yeah, to your point, my, my daughter lives in, in a apartment complex out in California where, actually, they were told the tractor-trailer can't come in. So when she was being moved out, that was one of the things is, you know, the tractors are not allowed in, it's, you know, you gotta get a, so, you know, I suppose they could actually, you know, that could, you know, um, I, 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 I'm, I, I think that generally speaking, it's gonna be smaller trucks.
I mean, I, I imagine their salespeople would say the same thing, that you can't have your stuff delivered with a tractor-trailer.
Uh, we, you know, I'm, I'm more concerned about just having a, a place that, you know, deliveries and things like that, furniture, you know, and when Bernie and Phil shows up with their truck, and, and, you know, and that takes time, I mean, you know, you know, Bernie and Phil comes in, drops off a couple of pieces of furniture, or they gotta set some furniture up, that truck's gonna be parked in the road blocking traffic, so, I mean, I, you know, it's that sort of thing that really needs to be accounted for, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's, I get the, I get your point about your daughter, but, you know, if you're a customer and you're ordering furniture.
Yeah.
You don't get to tell Bernie and Phils, don't bring a long trailer, it, they'll never get to the right person. Whatever truck is gonna show up is gonna show up. And I'm not saying overdesign it, I, I think, I think you're right, you can't, you, we shouldn't make this much bigger with a lot of pavement than it needs to be. But I think there, there needs to be more consideration, I think, for these, all these short-term visits that.
I think that's a good word, more consideration for, for these things.
So, I, I, I could tell you, we have weekly meetings with our management company to discuss issues. That's never been an issue. Not to say it couldn't, because I acknowledge that it could happen, but to date, it has not happened with us, that's all I can say.
All right, um, the next one we have on here is the, uh, waste removal. Um, it looked like on that plan, there was one spot that might be for dumpsters. Um, it wasn't entirely clear, um, but we would recommend, uh, dumpster locations at each of the four buildings. Um, you know, with the expectation that someone who does have accessibility concerns isn't going that far. Um, but we also wanna see where those dumpsters are going and to have it verified that a dump, a trash truck. That a dump, a trash truck can make the maneuvers necessary to get to where that dumpster is to dump it. Uh, we wanna see those turns being made. Similar to the way the the fire truck was assessed. So where it's going in, how far is it backing out? How many? You know, how many times does it need to keep changing to get where it's going?
Could I speak to that? While it's fresh on a. So we've we've examined this and so the the uh, the only thing uglier than our pavement is our dumpster. And no one wants to live near a dumpster or be near a dumpster, except when you wanna throw trash. We've 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 moved on to to multiple sites, most convenient, to one central spot with our dumpster. And so it's a electronic, it's a, it's a, it's a trash compactor, so it's much more compact and smaller. And because we don't want, and and I hear what you're saying about dumpsters at each building because. The laziness in us wants to do that, but we don't care about the lazy people. If you have to walk it down there, I know some some communities, we don't do this now, but we may have concierge. Trash pickup too, where they pay another, you know, two dollars a week and somebody collects the trash outside the door. And we may do that if we have, you know, more people with disabilities. Right now, we don't have that issue, but. That's something that we have full-time management people on staff, we could do that, so. Think back to a dumpster question, we propose one location with a truck, a trash. It costs us significantly more to install initially, but over the long haul, it's it's. It's a little bit more cost-effective and it's certainly much more attractive for the community.
And where is the planned site for that?
We try to locate it in the least, you know, conspicuous spot on.
The one I saw on the big plans is uh.
The bottom right.
Yeah, bottom right. And the only thing I have against that is you, they're pulling in past a a six-car garage. And they have to.
Back out.
Every car, every pickup truck, every homeowner and a and a trash company's gotta pull. In then back out. That that's, that's the only, if if, to me, if it could be up where the parking areas are. Just up a little bit to the left.
So again, we try to keep it away from.
I I realize.
And the other thing is with this trash compactor, we have less, much less frequent trips. You know, versus a standard.
Who stands there and runs it, though? I mean, the hopper gets full and somebody's gotta run it, right?
I can't tell you all the mechanics.
But but you're talking trips by the trash truck?
Yes.
Cuz they're compacting everything.
Yes.
If you have a trash compactor in your kitchen. You're not taking the trash out, you know. So. So you're planning one dumpster for two hundred and forty units?
Yeah, that was my question.
That's crazy. I. I mean, I, I again, I just go by experience of of the products I work on around the state and. Forty-unit apartment buildings typically have a trash room in the in the basement. With trash compactors and and a trash chute. So if you're, if you live in a four-story building. You go outside your door, there's a trash door on your floor, you put the trash in, you put your recycling in. Both of it goes down a chute into a trash room in the bottom. Then there's a compactor in each building. And then the the trash company, when they come pick up the trash, they go to each building's trash room door, they pull out the bins, empty them, put the bins back in. That avoids the exterior dumpsters. You don't have that issue, you don't have the smell issue. And it's centralized for each building, so people don't have to walk outside and and do it. I just. You know, it's a design issue. It's not necessarily the board's prerogative to to design these buildings, but that, to me, that would be much more efficient and. Nice, nicer meant frankly to the residents.
So I'm not. Mr. Chair, get on to that. Uh, so can you just zoom out a little bit too? The the only other thing I I completely agree with Dan. I mean, you have one spot for all two hundred and, you know, plus units. My my other concern, especially when we're talking about parking, is like, if you're on the northwest side. You're probably not going to walk all the way back there to drop your trash off. So now you have cars that are probably driving by like it's a mailroom trying to drop trash off. And that just concerns me too with the garage being there. I mean, it's just.
So 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 to that point. There's, I think it's an Avalon development behind the Dunkin' Donuts in Shrewsbury. That's the Dunkin' Donuts on Route twenty. So I've sat in that, at the drive-through there many times, and their trash, I think it's something exactly like Steve's talking about. They're trashing and recycling, by the way. I assume recycling's down here?
Yes.
They're built, it's a, it's a building is right there next to the drive-through. And I see cars streaming through there and and I'm sure what's happening is. In the morning on the way to work. Honey, take the trash out, you know, whatever it is. But it's a steady stream, so the, you know, my concern is is not so much the the trash truck backing up. But it's everyone else pulling in there on their way out. I mean, how many, how many trips in a peak hour in the morning leaving the bu- ninety, I think it was?
Ninety-five.
You know, if half of them are, you know, swinging by the, dropping off the trash on the way out, I mean, you know, that that's a lot of trash. Lot of cars going in and then backing out or that sort of thing, so.
And where do those cars queue?
Yeah.
Waiting to get into.
I I know you, you know, we really don't have, we don't have that experience. I I can say is we don't have that problem.
But do you have it at the end of a one? Kind of a dead end? With no other outlet?
And do you have it for two hundred and forty units?
No, we don't. Um, you need, you need a lot of units to 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 justify a compactor. You know, there there, it's an expensive piece of equipment. So the trash people have formulas that they use, um, so that we don't. Because it's a disaster for us if we don't have enough capacity, you can imagine, and and if we don't have enough capacity. We have to do more frequent trips, which in in increases our costs, but we don't want to let the trash sit for a month either because of. Obvious other problems we have with trash sitting, so there's a, the trash experts, I'm not one. They have a formula, they tell us the size.
Yeah, I'm not talking so much about the compactor though, I'm just talking about the layout. Um, cuz like, I mean, like I said, like you're northwest, a day like today where it's thirty degrees outside, you're you're gonna drive and. If you pull down that little slit there, you gotta back up, turn around if all those spots are taken, I I mean. So I'm just, I I like the idea that you have it in like one location, right? Um, to kinda keep it away, like you said, no one likes to see that. Um, I just don't know if that's the best.
Well, if convenience was a factor, we'd have it right in front of the clubhouse. But we don't, we don't rate the convenience part of this um, as a priority. We're we're more concerned about aesthetics and and who wants to be there. And looking at it more than anything, so there's there's that balance and that that we think. That we wanna hide it as best we can, and yes, it is gonna be more work for our. Our customers to to walk back there, but uh, we think that that is worth it for us.
How wide is that space between the six-car garage and the and building four?
Um, we we set the garages back three feet off the curb line, so we got twenty-seven feet, twenty-four plus three.
You said between the garages and building four?
Building four.
I'm sorry.
Well, whatever this, is that a sidewalk?
I thought you were talking about going down to where we have the the dumpster, the trash.
Yeah, like that's, yeah, like, so people, oh, there, is that parking here?
Yeah. All right, so this is the old drawing, but then no one has parking here.
I'm just thinking about cars pulling in, can, will they be able to turn around and come, i- if there was a little bit of a queue. Is there space for them to pull in, dump their trash?
Well, if there's a queue, they're gonna, you see where those nine parking spaces are, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna have to walk.
Yeah.
A hundred feet, sixty feet.
Take the, toss it in. Run back to your car.
All all the points that you bring up are something that we take very serious.
Yeah.
We take all these very seriously.
We're, we're gonna look at, reanalyze all of this and say, alright, talk to the to the trash hauler. Okay, double-check with everybody and then, you know, maybe make some tweaks. Part of a a good. We were trying to keep dumpsters, I know in the previous iteration. On the, uh, out towards Snow Road on the south side, we had a dumpster over there and it was near. One of the butters on Snow Road. Just so you don't have a neighbor here that, you know, beep 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 at seven o'clock in the morning.
Thoughts were to be as nice to the neighbors as we can also.
Stick it in the back as far away from, you know, m- more towards, you know, the backside of of the Stop and Shop.
And and if you look at a plan, that's the remote, most remote spot we have on site, really.
So that was the rationale behind that, just keep it as far away from disturbing anybody as we can. Both internally and externally.
It's also the closest to the wellhead.
I mean.
It's a long ways from the well.
To the high side, to the high side of building three is a lot of room.
What's that?
To the high side of building three is a lot of room where you had the uh, townhouses before.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's all kinds of room right there.
Yeah.
We could put it over there.
And that's, and back to driving aisles and pulling in and pulling out, that that's, that's definitely a viable spot.
We can look at that. We'll look at that.
Yeah.
Nora, I mean, what I, I think Alex has suggested, where that. The parking spaces are between those two garages, the eight-car garage. And the six-car garage.
Oh, and that, where the nine parking spaces are?
Yeah. Yep.
In that area? Yeah, that and and.
Because then you could.
Pick it up, dump it, boop, get out.
Right, that way you're not going down a one, like it's, that's a one-way, you know, one way in, one way out. Or the north side, like, um, Peter just.
Yeah.
Just recommended.
Those are, those are all definitely.
But I I mean, I I I think you.
We get it.
You know, address the concern from the butter, I I think that is still relevant. We don't wanna.
Right, right.
We're a long ways from the butter though there, but um, on on this other side here, we were much closer. Cuz we originally did have one right there in the in the southwest corner, southwest corner. And we did move that because of that butter there. We knew we, we didn't think you'd like that.
You you got the point.
Yeah, we get it. And keep in mind, this whole discussion we're having assumes that there's gonna be two hundred and forty units.
Yep.
If this was a smaller project, it would open up so much more space and flexibility to to manage trash.
Agree a hundred percent. Carry on.
Sure, um. So our next recommendation is to include weight finding signs, um, essentially when the facility or the. The development area is being entered, that there's sufficient signs to direct emergency vehicles to the correct buildings that they're looking for. Um, and also to inform visitors, but primarily the concern is emergency vehicles. Uh, making sure people know where each building is the best path to get there. Then our next comment, accessible paths. Uh, we wanna make sure that there's an accessible path to each building. Uh, there, you know, particularly from the entrance, there's some sidewalk going in different areas. Uh, but to the rear buildings, uh, three and four, you know, you would wanna see crosswalks essentially getting from one side of that parking area to the other. Um, also, the the park area, having accessible pathways to there. Uh, again, to the dumpsters, to the waste removal, you need, wanna ensure that someone who is disabled can get to that dumpster to get rid of their waste. And then just making sure that all pedestrian facilities are designed to be American with Disabilities Act guidelines. And the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements for accessibility. Beyond that, the pedestrian curb ramp details that were in the plan set. Uh, they didn't show any detectable warning panels, so we wanna make sure those are included, so anyone who has a a visual impairment. Uh, you'll see these on a lot of wheel, uh, sorry, pedestrian curb ramps. They, they're essentially little bumps at the end. Uh, those are for detection for someone who's visually impaired. Uh, wanna make sure those are included. Um, crosswalk widths, we wanna make sure the width of the crosswalk, not just the length is defined. Um, we'd like to see a a crosswalk detail. Uh, we recommend a minimum width of eight feet. Uh, that's, that's standard, you know, wider is better, but eight feet is is what we, you know, would recommend for. For a minimum width for a crosswalks. Um, so just to see that as a detail or provided on the plan set. Also, we'd encourage the applicant's team to identify locations where raised intersections. Or raised crosswalks could calm traffic and also improve pedestrian accessibility. Um, and then our last comment, the sightline triangles that we were discussing earlier. Uh, we'd like to see those shown on the plans, along with a note that indicates that signs, landscaping and other features located in those sight triangles. Um, should be designed, installed and maintained to not exceed two and a half feet in height. Uh, so we wanna make sure that nothing's being put in after the fact that's going to impact that sight distance as you're trying to turn out of that roadway. So anything installed there is below two and a half feet, that provides you sufficient vision over it. Um, and then also that snow shouldn't, the snow piles shouldn't be located within those sight triangles. We wanna see that included on the plans. Um, at least, and with snow piles, uh, the generally accepted height is not above three and a half feet. So, just a indication that snow piles will be kept below three and a half feet shown on the plans. And that is our recommendations there.
I've never seen a snow pile below three and a half feet.
How do you control that?
Questions.
When you get ten feet of snow.
It's it's just within the sight triangles, though.
Yeah.
I I thought there was a comment the last meeting about. Expanding the stu- the intersection study areas to include East Street. Did, was that, was that brought up? I thought a neighbor or somebody had suggested that.
I am a little curious about that, so, you know, we study going left. You know, forty percent, I think, of the traffic is going right north. Should, should the, essentially it's Snow Road and East Street intersection have been studied?
If, if, if it's going to be maintained that that many are actually turning that direction, then that, you know, we might wanna have that included, yeah.
That's why I was saying by the railroad, that's where I'm talking about, going towards that intersection.
Is that lighted? Is that, is that a lighted intersection?
No.
Every intersection's lighted.
I'm in. Signal.
No, 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 oh, oh, that type, no. So my. I thought you meant a of overhead lighting.
My my comment on that was that I don't believe, I. I would like them to re-look at how many people are actually going to go that direction, but if what there's, if the percentage that's being. Put in here is accurate, then that could be included as part of the study.
Could or should?
Should.
Yeah, alright, so did you say that?
No, we didn't have that in here, so we'll, we'll update that.
Alright, thank you. I I have, I have one question, it's kind of a, to to my fellow town members. Um, I was thinking, you know, we talked a lot about. The intersection of Snow Road and Worcester Street, coming down Snow Road and and how long it takes, that's what you did this afternoon. But then it just occurred to me, but I've never done this, if you're coming south on Worcester Street. So you're coming from the Pike or whatever, coming south on Worcester Street, and you wanna turn left into Snow Road. Is, first of all, is the, is the road two lanes at that point?
No.
It's still one lane.
Still one lane.
So I would think queuing there as well is gonna be an issue.
Yep.
So that'd be more in the afternoon, if people are coming home.
Right.
But I I think that's could become a really serious issue. That's, that's one lane at that point.
There's a wide breakdown lane, I know, but I'm I'm.
Yeah, that's that's why, that's kinda why I asked, was it one lane or two lanes? I think that's where it's becoming too.
Yeah.
There's a, some, some of the audience is saying. Yeah, yeah. Right there. Which is slightly illegal, by the way.
So, yeah, it depends on on enforcement.
Yeah, so I I I think that, I I don't know if that was really mentioned, but I think that's, that's part of the whole queuing and. You know, delays at that intersection, you know, that'd be more, I guess, afternoon, but.
Yeah, we do have a comment in here, um, about looking at a left turn lane for that maneuver.
Oh, I I guess I missed that, cuz I I know there's talk about, alright, I missed that, alright.
Uh, yeah, I believe that was item.
I'll, I'll have more time to review this. If it's in there, I'm, I'm sure I'll see it.
It it was part of the same comment that discussed having two lanes at the bottom of Snow Road.
Okay.
Uh, comment eleven.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, further comments from anyone on the board?
The the last meeting is, um, a comment of yours. Looking to see what level of density the project could sustain to avoid. Degrading the the service level of of that intersection from E to F. Is that a number that we can get to? I I'm a numbers guy and I wasn't able to get there. Um, to figure out the number of units that this development could contain. That would avoid us from from tripping from from a service level E to a service level F.
Yeah, I'm. I think the the best way to do that would essentially be, it it'd be an iterative process where you're, you know, changing the numbers, putting it into the the software used to synchro. And then outputting tho- those results until it gets down.
Even without the project, doesn't it go in with a no build in, does it turn to an F?
No, um, in in the study, it shows it staying at a level of service E. It does increase the delay by about three seconds, but with the project, it increased, it it doubles that delay. From this study.
So, um, following up on that then. Right now, it's a, you know, the decrease from E to F with one sixteen-point-nine second delay.
Um, right now, it's a, or the twenty twenty eight build, that's a forty nine point five second delay.
Yep.
Where, so somewhere between forty nine point five seconds and a hundred and sixteen point nine seconds, we flipped from E to F.
Yes.
Do you know where that is?
Uh, not offhand, I do believe it's. I wanna s- I, I would have to double check exactly where that comes in, the level of service also factors in, not just delay, but, um, of one of, so, there's, there's different types of delay, there's intersection delay, there's approach delay, and there's other factors that come into it, like the queuing. Um, so I, there's, there's an equation for it.
Okay.
But I don't. I wanna say it's somewhere probably around the seventy five-ish area, but I, I would have to check, I'm not entirely sure.
That, that, that's fine. Um, but, but right now, what we're talking about is roughly fifty seconds you can expect to delay wait at that intersection, which by the way is what Peter measured.
And I didn't do it right.
And, um.
No, I admit it.
So, so fifty seconds, and if this is built at the level discussed, that would go up to a hundred and sixteen seconds.
Yep.
Now, the next question, and I'm a bit of a numbers guy too, and, and I, is, is this roughly a linear equation, or is there some logarithmic to it such that if the project was half the size, could I expect that delta to be half the delta?
It, it is not linear in that sort of way.
No.
Because it, it's also factoring, a, a, a big part of this is factoring in the traffic flow on Worcester Road, or Worcester Street as well. So it's not just what's coming down here, it's what's going across there, it's the turning movements there, but also turning movements onto Snow Road. So it's, you know, a handful of cars more or less could have a bigger or smaller impact depending on a, a number of different factors.
You know, I, I'm, I, I was hoping it would be easier to, you know, say, look, we don't, don't flip from E to F. But that's really arbitrary. And, um, but I think it would be good to know, you know, you just said seventy five seconds. Let's just say, you know, what, what, what level of density would it take? What level, you know, how much would we need to reduce this to get to a point where it's a seventy five second delay instead of a, a, a one, whatever it was, one, one sixteen?
Yep.
So that, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to figure that out for us. And I'm just picking that out of, out of random, but I think it just kinda would help us to understand as we're looking at the size of this project and the impact to the road. Right now, the size of the project, the impact's gonna be a hundred and sixteen second wait, or an increase of roughly sixty six seconds.
Yep.
Roughly a minute. Let's cut that in half. What would it take?
Yeah, and one, one of the things I, I noted in here about the synchro analysis that was done on here, it didn't specify which methodology was used. So we don't know which methodology was used to get these numbers, and we do want that information provided. But potentially, we could come up with different numbers depending on the method used.
Well, ask them for, ask them for the methodology and then.
That is, that is in our comments on here. That we need that information.
Excellent.
And, Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
I know we talked about queuing and not having the queuing analysis, but are we confident, when we look at these numbers with forty nine and a half, a hundred and seventeen seconds, that they include the entirety of the process? So, queuing, getting through, are we confident that that's the whole picture? Or is there a chance that this is just sitting at the end of the road, once we tack on the queuing, now we're talking about a bigger number?
Uh, so in the synchro reports that were provided, so let's see, for their builds, looking at AM Peak, let's say for existing. That would be the approach delay, it, it does appear that they used the approach delay for that.
So that includes the queue.
Yeah. So that's, that's your.
That should be all in.
Yes. Um, my, my guess, not having the, the queue analysis here, is that within a relatively low volume road, your queues probably, you know, at least for existing, only one to two cars, so it probably is mostly sitting at that stop line. If your queue is increased because you have more cars per hour, that's actually, you know, once you start adding to that, again, it's not, it's not linear, because now you're waiting for another car to make that maneuver for that amount of time, so as more cars get involved during those times, if they're not as nicely spaced out, that can, you know, increase, not lin- not linearly, it can increase a bit more, so.
Other questions or comments? Just before we go to, um, public, um, I have one other question kinda going back to the site plan, I've been meaning to ask. So, uh, I know that behind CVS, there's a fairly substantial retaining wall. How close is your property line to that retaining wall? Do you know?
They have, they have a big drop off in the back of their property.
There's a pretty substantial slope that goes from our property line down to, down to where that retaining wall is.
There's two houses in between us.
There's two, there's a couple of houses in between.
You said CVS, right? Yeah.
Or behind.
He said CVS.
Oh, behind, oh, oh, this, oh, from C, behind CVS, I thought, cause there's another, I think there's another wall behind.
No, that's a slope.
Oh, so behind CVS, there's two, there's two houses.
Between us and CVS.
Like if you look at the bottom corner of that site plan?
So I think as you're going behind, if you, if you go to the CVS drive thru, there's, the houses I think are in front of you. We don't about CVS.
Right, if you look at the map, I just put up Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what I mean.
So here's the retaining wall, there's this house here before you get to the house back here.
Okay, alright, alright, so it is the houses, alright, got it. But you're right, there's a retaining wall there. Yeah.
Oh, for some reason, I was thinking behind CVS, but it's not, I mean, be- behind Stop and Shop.
Um, Katrina, could you drag that to the left, I just wanna see behind Stop and Shop?
Sure.
There's a big drop off.
Let me take the oblique off, hold on.
By the water district.
The vertical.
Bill.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm thirty feet.
Okay.
Twenty, thirty feet.
Alright, that's fine, I, I.
You were afraid that right off our property line, it was gonna go.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, got it.
Where are you about the water district way in the back? Do you own up to where that drop off is, or are you away from that drop off?
You're talking where that, like, where the, there's that arched line with the water district.
That, that's the radius must be for the well, but.
Yeah, we own that property.
And that's the property line, where that is, and then.
No, no, not the arc.
No, 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 but.
Straight line.
The property line is that arced line.
Is it?
The arc is the property line.
The arch is the property, then the property line is where it says Grafton Water District on one side of it and nothing on the left?
Correct.
Where is that?
Heavy, like, big dash and then two small.
Where is that drop off, on the water district side then, or is it on your side?
Um, let me look at that, at the contour. It's flat.
Gradual slope going down Doris Drive, the banking behind Stop and Shop is probably something like thirty five to forty five degrees, cause I'm trained on it.
I can. That's still, that's the property line?
Right, and I'm talking right, I'm talking right, oh, this is all flat, okay.
And then when you get over here, that's where it goes down.
Okay, okay.
Looks like right on the line.
Must be right on the line.
But it looks like the slope's actually on, on the water district plan.
When they mined that.
Oh, most of that slope is on the water district plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Our property, unless you start heading to the, the north, that's where there is some slope on our property, but on that whole section, like towards the water district, it's all flat, all the slope is on the water district plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, so while we're on that actually, someone had submitted a comment asking about any possibility of a walking path down to.
That's a good point.
Um, Stop and Shop.
So this came in from Marky O'Connor, has there been any consideration of a walking path from the southeast corner of proposed development into back of Shopping Plaza, not sure if feasible, it would seem, um, and I, I think it's actually, there might be a convenience for your, for your tenants actually to.
There is, if you go to that back lot area behind like the right side of Stop and Shop Plaza, there is a path that, and.
That's utilized now.
That, there is a path there, I'm not sure if it cuts through part of the water district property or comes, actually, you know, I think it does cut through part of the water district property and then comes up into our site.
It parallels, it parallels Doris Drive and goes into the pond, which we used to call the muddy pond behind Paralakers.
So there is a path there, I just, if it's going, I don't know that it's going direct from the Country Plaza onto us, or if it goes through the, the water district property and then comes.
I, I think it's a great suggestion from, from the person.
We agree.
I agree with that.
Um, okay, anyone else? Alright, uh, open at the public comment, as I said before, just, shut up sir. No, 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 you gotta do it, or, or Bill's gonna start yelling at us. Again, you know, I just ask people to be respectful of everyone's time and, uh, not repeat too much.
Jim Bavosi, thirty Snow Road. Um, I'm, want to first apologize for getting involved this late in the process. I have lived on the corner, I or my family on the corner of Snow Road and Christmas Tree Lane since nineteen fifty six. And I'm happy to say that I was friends of the snows and a very good friend of their son Gary. All that said, I want to compliment the builder first of all, because I am familiar with the quality of the homes that they do erect. And I also wanna compliment the board for allowing this appeal. And I want to make sure that you understand that because of my hearing impairment, I may have missed some things, and I'm here at the request of my neighbors. I kind of gave up on town affairs and politics in the late eighties, because the directions seemed irreversible. Um, with that, I'd like to address, very patient two hours and I beg your indulgence, but I'd, I'd like to address the most recent topic first, and that is the traffic study. It is concerning to me that I believe we're at the appeal stage. We're not at an appeal stage yet, so it's preliminary to that, prior, prior to that, good. Because having an incomplete traffic study, it seems like in many respects, we're beyond that. But we're revisiting it where I thought that that would be something like environmental impact, where that would be done upfront, but I'm corrected on that.
This, this is, this is, so, so you're clear, this is the permitting phase.
Great, so I'm not too, then I'm not too late, correct? I'm not, not too late.
No. Not at all.
Good, and, and by that, it, it seems like since the development team judiciously so, has asked for a continuance, it shows concern, and that's always good. And I'm all about win-wins, my brother and I, who is a lifelong builder, and Mr. Adams knows very well, we have been on opposite sides of the table more than once. So, with all that, first of all, the, um, because I've lived there so long, I am very familiar with the street, with, first of all, the street, I can tell you at a time when I was a young person, we used to ride gigs, if anybody knows what that or remembers what that was. Basically, uh, three boards and four carriage wheels and a rope, clothesline rope. We used to ride those across Worcester Street safely, up Benard Road, what now is Harris, I believe, I think. So, it, it's, it's changed. Progress is progress, and I'm all about win-wins. But, um, I need to share a couple of things so everybody gets a proper feel, perspective of what it's like, or what it's been like to, to live on that street, I'm very, very happy to have been a resident there. The traffic will create fatalities. Maybe not yet, but it will, and it's not getting any better. As one of our past very, very wise citizens in town, Mr. Bolak said in the late eighties, and he actually was bold enough, you're very fortunate to be at this position, because in the late eighties, he was voted down for suggesting the M word on construction and building. He wanted a moratorium, maybe some of you elders can remember that very well. And for good reason, he said, you gotta be careful what you do with Worcester Street unless you want another Main Street Holden in our town. And wow, was he prophetic, we now have Main Street Holden right down at the end of Snow Road, the, almost the entire length of Worcester Street. As a matter of fact, it's so dangerous, as, as Mr. Adams mentioned recently, and that's a one-time occurrence. Happens all the time for residents on that street, by the way. As a matter of fact, my wife won't take a left-hand turn down there. She goes right, goes up Wheel the Road, goes over Brigham Hill Road and comes down here at the police station to go to Dunkin' Donuts or the banks, she's petrified. And there is one area, having taken statistics and testing and merge, uh, measurements that can't be quantified, okay, one unit of measure, it's called the stress oval. And until you, in, in, two other things that need to be taken into account, there is best case scenario and worst case scenario. Worst case scenario, you wait much longer than a minute, by the way, five minutes. And let me say that, a lot of sources had told me that another light isn't in the carts down there, too close to the Country Plaza light. If you're at that stop sign at the end of Snow Road, and even if there's a red light at Country Plaza, you still have right on red. They come out. The speed, I'll let you define that number, but if it's thirty miles an hour and four hundred feet on Snow Road, I'll bet you the money I have in my wallet right now that it's more like forty five plus going from that stoplight to Snow Road. So you better be quick, you've gotta make some snap decisions there. Not always good decisions, sometimes if you wanna stretch the law, it's a rolling stop. Sometimes you're bold and you pull out when you shouldn't. My wife takes a very cautious conservative route and just won't go left. That shouldn't have to be. Now, you had mentioned as a potential, um, emergency access, I like win-wins. And I'm not opposed to development, but it's gotta be a win-win, everybody's got a game, including the town of Grafton. Because you all have to figure out how we can pay for all the extra goods and services and schools to support all the people that wanna live in our town, which is wonderful. But you mentioned earlier, John, about using it as an emergency access, Doris Drive. Perhaps you could approach the people from the Country Plaza development people and try to get a second access to your development down behind the, was it Anytime Fitness, to come out skirting, or maybe even the town could grant, so long as it doesn't affect the recharge areas and the, and the pump, the wells, to come out that way to use the existing light. That might be a possibility. Also, there's something to be gained, having insider information, because I and some of my family had chances to buy that property years ago. And my brother, who is, has been a retired builder right now, estimates that you're sitting on three quarters to a million dollars worth of. estimates that you're sitting on three-quarters to a million dollars worth of great bank gravel over there, by the way. Okay, so if that can be redistributed, sold, or create a gentle second access, and you can gain through the town and through Country Plaza LLC, if you can gain some access there and use the existing light, because having, my wife's a stop-and-shop girl. So seldom do you see more than four or five cars at that light. The flow has been provided adequately, you know, so it's not too bad. It's a whole lot better. Without a second light, you're looking at real trouble on Snow Road. I mean, that in itself, and if you're trying to solve, a lot of time was, and talk was made concerning the available parking spaces. Kind of afraid with, I'm very much in line with Mr. Adams on that. The best way to increase parking spaces is to reduce units. It's just common sense. And it'll solve all, a multitude of other problems with all of these required radiuses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All about common sense, finding common ground, you know, but I have to say, when my brother and I, who's like your group, work for people who had put in, my brother's been building houses since age 16, okay? So he's put in conservatively thousands of homes, working for developers. And he highly respects you people, by the way. He would say that, and again, we're opposite sides of the table, the amount of units you're proposing is preposterous. So you gotta, there's gotta be some give and take here, okay? Because it can't work as described. Yes, we can differ of opinion, but, you know, there's practicality that needs to be taken into account at all times. Just not numbers. Because unless you live there, you don't know what it's like. You really don't know what it's like. The neighbors do. The reason why I'm here is because the neighbors asked me to get involved. Okay, and I'm glad I'm not too late now. I'm at the age, almost 73, where I could probably sell tomorrow, pocket a few bucks, and move to a quieter place. Still, it's still on the table, right? But for those that stay behind, they're not taking a right, taking a right and taking that detour. Never mind the minute to two minutes, worst-case scenario for me. I've been down there five minutes and was swearing to, I couldn't take a left, and I refused to take a right. So I just waited out, and I fumed. But it's gonna get worse, and unless that's fixed, I don't see a path forward that's a win-win. I want you to win. I want the town to win. I want my neighbors to win. And that's why I applaud the process. I just want to look at my notes to make sure I didn't check, I didn't miss any things to talk about. Think I covered it all.
Thank you. Is anybody else?
Thank you for your time.
Tony Sikora, 3 Greenie Drive, right on the corner of Snow Road and Greenie Drive. Geez, let's see. A lot was discussed today. I think the main thing I want to start out with is, I think the revised plans, and I feel the revised plans is a slap in this board's face. You asked to come back with something more attuned to what everybody's been talking about. 28 homes, 28 townhouses. By the way, how tall are these buildings that they've now readjusted? Are they two-story? Are they three-story? A gentleman on the other side of Snow Road just built a nice two-story, or one and a half-story, two-story buried in the ground town, or duplex that he's right there, that fits into the neighborhood. We're looking at, we're talking about being right behind Stop &amp; Shop. Okay, we all saw the property lines that were shown here, where it's at. Let's get rid of all the trees and see what you're gonna look at. You're gonna look at four high-rises sitting there. Four high-rises sitting right next to what you questioned, the well field. Which right next to the well field is gonna be a garbage dump, run by hydraulics, has a compressor, okay? Number one, you're gonna have electricity back there. Number two, you have hydraulics. I've been in the industrial sector for 50 years, retired out of it. I worked on more hydraulics you can shake a stick at. And dumpsters don't last. They leak oil. And now you have oil sitting there. So now you gotta have somebody in containment and everything else. That's gotta be taken place and be considered by this board to make sure it's taken care of. We have enough problems with our water in this town, that the water district, whether they're working on it or refuse to take care of, there's all of us in that district, and I don't know how many in this board live in that north Grafton section behind where us and the rest of the people that used to be here all live, and have to deal with the now flyers that we brought last time on the PCS2s or whatever it is that's in our water, and the dirty water, which we all suffer from and change filters and everything while we get a $10 rebate a month. It's getting kind of concerning that this board is allowing this to go forward without them coming back after three visits with a plan that fits into what you're looking at. The other thing I was thinking of the other day is if you take a look at the map that we were talking about the whole side where the park is, how much topography is gonna be changed in this property? There's a trough that runs from Snow Road, and I'm gonna call it what it's called on my property, an intermittent runoff. It's not called that on this, but I'll lay you odds, it was an intermittent runoff, because I looked at it yesterday after all the rain, and it was flooded. Well, where's it going? It's going to our well field. Now you're gonna take all that water and capture it and put it in one of these cement concrete basins, densify it with all the stuff that's coming off the roofs of all these buildings, which you've read the report that was put out by the water district. What causes it? That pollution that we're finding in the water we drink, runoff from buildings. Paints, roofing, that's the stuff that's in the water. Now you're gonna densify it in these culverts and concentrate right next to our well field. It'll make it there, because all of that travels all the lake ripple. Look at the topography maps of that area. Consider that to what you're doing. You look at this, we're building grade A, I'm gonna say grade A with town, or apartments or whatever. Would it be nice to have in this town? Does this town need it? Yeah, I'm bordering on what you, the word he was gonna be talking about, about holding back on it. But do we really need that amount? You have two major constructions going on now, if I'm not mistaken, for apartment complexes. You have one that's not rented out, still trying to rent out by the ball fields. Signs are still up. They're trying to rent out. I know for a fact that the big one down by Market Basket, it's got availability. Does this town have the industry to support all of this? Or are we just bringing people in? Now it's gonna transfer into something else. There are traffic reports. Because if we're just bringing people in to live here and not work here and not getting businesses here that are gonna support these people in these complexes, in these, the new homes and everything, that are gonna be traveling, okay, fine. But now you're dealing with a lot more traffic. We've become the Hudson, or the Holden. We've become Main Street on Shrewsbury, Route 30. Try to get home down 140. Has anybody, you said you were trying to get out on 122. Try taking 140 down from 20 to get just to East Street and Snow Road. It takes you 15 minutes just to work your way through all the traffic. And that's traffic that's cutting through this town. And where do a lot of them turn? East Street. And I know because that's the way I turn, because I live off of Snow Road and Greenie, which means I gotta come east to Snow Road and around, and they're usually hugging my tail. And I purposely do 30 miles an hour just because I know that's the speed limit to aggravate them. So the traffic is going more and more, becoming more of a problem. My feeling, we don't need it. Again, trees, our water, heights, dumpsters, product. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Whitney, 13 Greenie Drive. I don't know how I can follow up behind these two, but I just want to talk about one big elephant in the room is the setback, okay? It's 202 feet from the water district. Now, I told you Zohar last time, and this was a month ago, last meeting, I was going to the water district. Well, I went down there the next morning, no results. Dave wasn't there. Dave was off for a few days. Went back, Dave was not there. Well, no Dave. Hasn't returned phone calls or anything else. So I want to know, by the state laws, it's 200 feet, if I'm not mistaken, and by our bylaw, it's 400 feet. So building three here in the corner, I believe it is where the dumpster is, what is the distance between the water district and their building? 25 feet, 35 feet, 40 feet?
What, what bylaw is 400 feet?
With the well.
That radius is a 400-foot radius from the well.
Okay, so they're at 202 feet?
No, they're, that curved line is 400 feet from the well.
Okay. That's not what it looks like on here. Do you see it on there? Is it measured out there? 400 feet from the well?
It says it right on the, it says R equals 400. This plane doesn't show the well.
Sorry, Mayan's so small, you know?
No, it doesn't show the well.
Oh, okay. So, again then...
If there was something that said they had to be 400 feet from something,
Yeah.
and they weren't going to be 400 feet from something, you'd have to ask for a waiver.
Right, well, that's what I was getting.
So then we'd have a discussion about what that really means.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we're already on another waiver tonight. It's for...
We haven't gotten, we're maybe...
Preparing for another waiver, okay? The parking, again, like Peter says, you go in there with a tractor-trailer, or everybody else, Bernie and Phil's, well, now they use pup trucks, which is a small trailer and a tractor-trailer. So that's not gonna make it, especially if there's somebody coming around this right-hand current, this turn here and going down to the driveway. It's just gonna be a little, when you get the young kid that's 18-years-old running around with mommy and daddy's car, it's just a little drag strip inside. I know you're not, it's not gonna happen, but it could happen, okay? And where the dumpster is, that's not. You could put it over at the other side. And my other thing, I'm gonna leave you on this, and nope, I still don't think the waiver should be granted. This building should not be over three stories high, neither one of them. If, you know, if they can get by with losing 32 spots already, okay? Recalculating what they're telling us tonight, they took off 32 units away. So if you drop it down to make each building 48, okay? Which is a total of 192 units in the four buildings together. I mean, that's three stories high, and that meets the requirement. Before, it doesn't. And the other, one last thing, is remember, when they're talking to the fire department, we're getting a new ladder truck. And what size is that gonna be? We don't know. It's gonna be delivered in what, 2026? They put the order in?
I don't know when it gets delivered, but it's a good point. I would hope that, I would hope at this point, he's got a template for, and that's what we'd be planning for.
Yes, because from what I understood, it was 2026 the new truck was coming in, because the old one's already 30, what, almost 30 years? So, all right, thank you.
So you've got your hand up, please.
Good evening. I'm Robert Ryan-Barner. I live at 21 Snow Road, and...
Just for reference, where is that in relation to the project?
I'm across the street and down about four houses north. I'm a little bit confused that, well, let me go back and restate what I've stated before. This is an R20-zoned property with some community business. And my understanding is that if you follow the bylaws, you could put approximately 29 single-family homes in here. Now, I'm concerned that we're discussing details of a site plan that is grossly non-compliant with these bylaws. And I think we're losing sight of the fact that they want to build 240 units where the bylaws indicate that 30 are more appropriate. And I don't really care what the traffic is for 240. I think we should be discussing how we can, why we would even allow 240 units to go into this small area that's zoned for 30. And I guess my question to the board is, you know, we do this dance with the applicant and the board and the people from town, and we get to express our opinions, but why, I don't understand why the board hasn't voted to reject the site plan because it is so grossly non-compliant with the bylaws.
Well, first of all, at least one member has brought up the fact that, you know, it's, he likes the single-family homes, right? So it has been brought up. But the way the process works is, we are asked to act on what the developer wants to build. We can't tell him what to build. So he's asked to build 268 units or whatever it is. That's what we have to act on. Now, yes, we could have rejected it right, right away. But I think this board, you know, wants to hear, how can, wants to hear and discuss how we can make this better. I agree with you. I think, my opinion is right now, it's still way too big. I think, I think the number's gotta be about a third of what it is now. But I don't like to think in just numbers like that. And I'm more concerned about impacts and traffic in particular, and that's why we had a discussion. And I asked the, you know, how do we avoid changing the service level from E to F and things along those lines? And that's the way I tend to think of these things. So, look, if you can, you can, and I know you can't, I know it can't be done, but if you can build your 200 units without impacting the Snow Road intersection, maybe it's okay. If you can build your 200 units without building something that's ugly and affecting the neighborhood, maybe it's okay. Right now, I know these things aren't quite realistic, but you have to, in my opinion, you have to approach it that way. They want to build something, we need to try and talk to them and work with them and get to something that works. We do have the luxury of saying no, all right? And that's something that the planning board oftentimes doesn't have the option to do. That's something that oftentimes us as ZBA don't have the option to do. But we're in what's called safe harbor, and we can say no if we want.
So I don't understand...
What 40B is?
40B is the, is the section of the Masters's law that they're in front of us under, which is just...
My understanding was that with the safe harbor, that they lose their leverage in, in... Having, normally, if they were under the 40B, they'd be able to request waivers, and you wouldn't be able, as a board, wouldn't be able to
It would be difficult.
reject the waivers. You'd have to approve them.
It would be difficult.
Yes, so this land has been zoned this way for a long, long time, and these rules are in place. So I don't understand why the board is even entertaining... So I don't understand why the board is even entertaining something of this magnitude that is so blatantly non-compliant with the bylaws. And I would encourage the board not to issue any waivers and let the applicant submit a plan that's appropriate for the neighborhood, that meets the zoning bylaws. And it'll probably save us a lot of time and effort and money on, on everybody's part if we don't have to do all these traffic analyses, worry about rain runoff and all this other stuff when we just follow the laws that are in place right now. And I think we have the leverage, I think that the town has the leverage to request that from a responsible applicant. And I think that's the route that you should be taking. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ma'am?
Wendy Allen, eight Frankie Lane, right behind Muddy Pond. So I, I actually have the same thoughts as Brian, a lot of the same thoughts. Because that's my, like, by nature, I'm kind of like a rule follower. And I think, like, if we say we want you to have two point two-five parking spaces, like, why isn't that just a no? Like, I, I don't super understand that because when I built stuff, I followed the rules. And like, I had to follow the rules. I'm sure I probably could have asked, but like, I don't understand why we have those things in place and then we don't just say, this is the rule, like. So that, I completely understand with him. And then the lollipop driveway is, is a big thing for me. It's a really big thing for me. I, my daughter sells Girl's Go Cookies. I'm in lots of, like, different places dropping them off and whatever. And there's other complexes that are sort of like this. And I honestly think nothing of, like, there's a space, we pull in right there and, you know, cha-cha, drop off the cookies, do whatever. And that's going to happen. And then additionally, there's kids all over when you're talking about, like, having the townhouse-style homes, like, all the time. Like, that is so dangerous to have people only be driving by those townhouses. It's amazing. I love this town because that is one of the things, the kids are outside all the time. And like I said, like, I mean, I have three kids, like, we're constantly, like, bringing them friends' house and whatever stuff. Like, that is a scenario you're going to see, you're going to see kids there. And then, and then I haven't heard anything recently about this, but what's happening with the environmental study? Are we going through stages and that will be a stage? Because there's pink ribbons back there now. So we're all wanting to know, like, what are the pink ribbons?
Markers for the property lines.
Because some of them are, like, really close to my property. Like, it's the easement for the town where the water comes out. So I don't know why they would be there.
I don't know, I mean, the opinion is.
The surveyors have it out there, has nothing to do with environmental studies. Surveyors were out there and they were marking where some property lines were. They were marking some property corners and just, and they have traverse points too where, you know, they'll set up on one spot and just so they know where they are out there. So it's, it's survey-related.
Okay, because it's, it's like, where I am, it shouldn't be, because I, I have bought Doris Drive land, so nothing can be built there. So, and then that's the easement. So I'm not sure why the markers are now there. But, so I know they're, like, behind Judy's house, but she's right there. And then, okay, because that was one of the recommendations from the Conservation Commission, was to look at the rental pools. Because right now, or at least how the plans were before, they drained right into where we have the rental pool that's not certified yet, so if you guys made any progress certifying that.
There, if, there was a couple of ponding areas. I think what you might be talking about is off of our property and off of, I think it's further to the east is where there, I think there's a rental pool.
So the rental pool, I believe in the map, shows exactly where you had your drainage is where the rental pool is. In the last plan, I don't know about this plan.
Well, with this plan, we're modifying things, so we're modifying the layout. But then we're going to revisit, as we said earlier, we're going to revisit how we locate and design our drainage.
Okay, because, so, so when you look through all the recommendations, the Conservation Commission, one of their recommendations is that you certify that rental pool. So have, so do you guys do that? Do you look through all the recommendations from the town and kind of?
Yeah, and we're going to be, and we will be going to Conservation.
Okay.
As things progress. But right now, we want to know how we're laying things out so it's not just a chess match or a chess game. We're switching this, going back, back, we want to kind of see.
We're not at that point yet.
We're not at that point yet.
Okay, that was my question.
And with respect to Conservation, anything defined by the state law, they've still got to comply with. And the Concom will do their work with respect to state law. As far as Grafton's laws, which can be more restrict, conservation laws, which can be more, more restricted, more conservative, however you want to look at it. If they want a waiver from any of those, then they're going to have to ask us for those waivers. And I don't know if they're asking us for any conservation-related waivers yet. But again, because of the redesign stuff, it's all a little bit preliminary, but. So we'll, so we will have a further discussion. If they are asking for conservation-related waivers, we will have more discussion when we get to that point.
Okay. I'll be Save the Turtles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Anybody online?
Um, yes, Sean Fullwood, Ed Brisby.
Bring him on.
Sean, can you give me your address, please? Sean, can you unmute?
Hi, good evening, this is Sean Fullwood, twenty-two Snow Road.
We can hear you.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is, so I live just about three houses down from the proposed project, Charlie Hurley's Old House. We bought back in twenty-twenty-one. And I can tell you from experience that the traffic here has steadily increased. One thing I didn't hear from the traffic study was the, the timetable for peak traffic hours coming down Snow Road. I can tell you from experience, because I could usually catch the five thirteen, or, I'm sorry, I catch the five fifty-seven train, or no, I'm sorry, pardon me, I catch the five thirteen train out in the morning. And by, if I catch the seven, it is absolutely packed. So you got, you guys are missing some significant traffic coming down Snow Road that fills out that parking lot. And then the, the converse in the evening. And then I think it was the first board meeting, the board brought up the builders wanting to be a part of this community. Like I said, I live about three houses down from where this proposed development is going to be. And I have yet to have any contact with the builders or them come by and introduce themselves and say, hey, we want to be integrated in this, in this community and have some, some, some intake or even really see what we're looking for outside of these meetings. So I, I really feel there's a little bit of disingenuousness when they say they want to be a part when they haven't engaged really the neighbors in the community. That, that's really all I have.
Thank you. You know, to that point, I, I don't think I've expressed this, but I was really disappointed that you have not had any outreach. The last three, maybe the more fortyBs that are in front of us, have had significant meetings with neighbors in advance of getting here. You know, I thought, I think they had it back when they were meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. So I do find that disappointing that you have not met with the neighbors and tried to incorporate their concerns into whatever design you've had. And I know it may be uncomfortable to do that, but other developers have done it quite successfully here in town. Is somebody else online?
Yeah, Ed Brisby. Go ahead, Ed.
Hi, guys, Ed Brisby, twenty-five Daniel Drive. As everybody, I think, in the room, or at least on the board knows, I'm chair of the Grafton Affordable Housing Trust. I'm not speaking as chair, I'm just speaking as an individual. And mostly, and I hate doing it, honestly. It's kind of a waste of my time. But because I watched a parade of people come up and tell you how much they don't want this project and how much they don't think Grafton needs this project, I sort of feel compelled, knowing better. And, you know, look, if there are people in the room that would understand that Grafton needs housing, let me disabuse you of that notion. Most of Grafton is housing insecure. And by that, I mean, there, most of Grafton is filled with people who are paying upwards of thirty, forty percent of their take-home income every month on housing. And study after study has shown, and this is just the math and the science, the more homes you build, the less that's the case. So it's perfectly fine to say, look, I live down the street from this, the traffic's going to be an issue and I'm concerned. That's okay. But at the end of the day, what we have to weigh is whether or not someone waiting an extra thirty seconds at a stoplight or a minute or two minutes outweighs the needs of people who can't pay for medical care or can't pay for food because they can't afford the rent. Because in neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood, every time we do this, and you guys know this, you guys know this. Every single time there's a housing development, what do people come to you with? They come to you with traffic. They come to you with now it's water. Well, I mean, you know, one of your former members made up an entire manifesto about how water was going to be infected and it turned out not to be true.
I'll give you my water out of my house, I'll deliver it.
Excuse me, sir.
But that has nothing to do with the housing. Do with the housing. It doesn't.
Continue, Mr. Brisby, please.
It, that has nothing to do with the housing. There are people who need housing, and the more of it we build, the cheaper it becomes. And that is part and parcel of being a community, and it has value here. You know, your teachers, your cops, the people who are going to clean that room when you guys leave it are dependent on housing that they can afford. And if you're telling them that they're not valuable enough to live in this community, I think you should tell it to them face-to-face. But otherwise, you got to provide them with housing, and that's what these guys are doing, and that's what chapter forty-B is for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Anyone else?
No, that's it.
Have anything new?
Robert Brian Bonner, twenty-one Snow Road. I agree with Mr. Brisby. However, I'm sure there are plenty of, of land in Grafton that is appropriately zoned for rental properties, apartment buildings. I'd like you to see if you could put this building on Worcester Street where the old high school was and see what kind of reaction you get from the, from the people there that it, that it's, I don't know what it's zoned for. Hopefully, it's zoned for a school, and maybe you can put a building there. I know these are Grafton-owned properties, there's a property in the center where the old DPW used to be. I assume that that could be zoned for, for apartments. I understand that our applicant doesn't own that property, but if Mr. Brisby would like to try to get the town to build something or sell the property and get apartments in appropriately zoned land, I'm all for it.
There's already a permit in place for the old DPW and the Affordable Housing Trust has grand plans for the old high school site. Anything new, sir? It is after our closing hour, so I ask you to be brief.
I will. Jim Bovose, thirty Snow Road. There is such a thing as quality of life.
Yep. That's, that's, that's our role.
A direct example of it. As an outdoorsman, all my life, I've seen open space disappear in town. Matter of fact, one of the major drainage areas that this development will affect is the Axtell Brook. Water drainage into our recharge area in one of our wells. Many years ago, I was able to, at the Carroll Road extension, do much fly fishing and caught native brook trout in excess of fifteen inches. I defy anybody to find one now, okay? Furthermore, you talk about open space and building. I was appalled because one of the reasons why I left the Forest Committee and walked away from town government is when I saw on that very corner of Carroll Road where, where Carroll Road extension begins and Axtell Brook crosses, I saw someone get a variance for a home. And the building line is probably less than seventy-five feet.
We need to stay focused on this development, sorry.
That is the development. Axtell Brook is water going in through the development.
We understand, there could be impacts to Axtell Brook.
But.
Somebody getting a variance.
What I'm addressing to the previous landowner is that there comes a time when, regardless of the need, if the natural resources in the land is not adequately available for that construction, then we have to make considerations, serious considerations.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Anyone else, any other comments? How's the board feel right now, besides tired?
Hungry?
About this project.
I'm going to waste a guy. I think, I've said this from the beginning, that the biggest concern is density. And I think reduction of, was it even ten percent? Is nowhere near the magnitude to move the needle. That's my opinion.
Density, I've said it before, thirty-six houses or so, or duplexes.
To the people that are wondering why we're still here, why we're still listening, I think the reason we're still listening is because we need the housing. I want a development on this property. I think we all look at it and see the density and say, wow, that feels like too much. We see comments from the planning department. I, I have more respect for Fiona Coughlin than I can express. It's like, some of her concerns scream to there being too much density. We look at effects, like the service level at the intersection of Snow Road and Worcester Road. Those are things we can quantify. That gets beyond the feeling that it's too much. And we try to find ways that we can articulate, all right, what would be acceptable? I'm a numbers guy, I'm a CPA by trade. I know Mr. McCusker's seen some numbers, at least to, to, you know, speak to the inability or the, the lack of a willingness to go to the lower levels of AMI. I think, I, I'd like to know or have a better appreciation for what the project can stand financially. What size does the project need to be at to make it feasible? I, I want something built there, but this feels too big.
I agree, dense, it's, it's too dense for the location. And there's got to be a point where what the developer paid for the land, he can only go so much smaller and it's not going to be feasible. And I think to Brian's point, knowing what that is and how it can be a win where you can still, it's affordable and that you're making money. Obviously, we don't expect you to lose money in a development, but how can we address these concerns of, of what everybody's saying? So it's a huge concern for all of us.
And, you know, is it worth the, your time and money and the board's time as a volunteer board to continue down this path if there's going to be no meaningful movement on the density?
You know, I, I, I answered, I answered, exactly.
The other point I'd add, though, is we need the housing, but our current situation's a privilege. Being in safe harbor is a privilege. And the way that you stay in safe harbor is you keep building affordable housing.
Right.
So that's another reason why we can't just say no. If we say no, a couple of years from now, Mr. Van Casa or the next guy is going to come in with a plan that's going to make it hard, a whole lot harder for us to say no to. We might like it a whole lot less.
That, that's an excellent point.
Yeah.
And that's the line we're trying to walk is to have something built on this piece of property that we can live with, that provides some affordable, affordable housing, but doesn't, you know, just in general, feel like this. in general feel like this mammoth development on a tiny postage stamp that I think is the way it it feels just by looking at it.
And as we all know, there hasn't been any forty B project in eleven years I've been on this board that the butters have come in and said, this is fabulous, I can't wait till this is built. So our job is to let, I mean, it it's true, nobody wants to have these projects in their neighborhood. And we need affordable housing and our job as a board is to listen and try to make this work and we have options because of safe harbor. But as Brian said, it's it's going to come up again in a in a couple of years. It doesn't go away. So we have to figure out the best way to make it a win-win, as somebody said.
Yeah, and we may be more than a couple of years away. I mean, you know, we there's there's two more than been approved that'll continue to extend. You know, us under our plan development.
Are those added in? Are those are in though, right?
So you plan development stuff.
Yeah, right.
But if you approve this project, it's not going to actually help with safe harbor because you already are you already in safe harbor.
Right.
You can't like tack this on. It'll help towards a ten percent and it's a rental project, so all the units will count towards ten percent, so it gets you closer to ten percent. But I will say, I think there's some concern that that's also moving target. We've seen a lot of legislation, including this year, changes to the zoning act, which just mandate increase density, the MBTA, section three. The ADUs as of right, there's just, even though you may reach ten percent eventually, there'll be other laws that'll continue the urbanization of suburbs in in a way that is challenging for a percent.
You know, at at the end of the day, I I I've got the same concerns I've had on on other ones and it's impacted the neighbors. It's traffic, if if if, you know, it's traffic, but this is the first one that really I think has a bad traffic situation and I mean, Mr. Brisby, you know, kind kind of made, you know, so you have to wait another minute, but I I think it's a lot more than you have to wait another minute. I mean, at that intersection, somebody said it, but there's a frustration level that starts to increase the longer you wait and you know, now you're at an intersection of of a of a fairly significant road and, you know, you you you're just making bad decisions, you know, I've been waiting here a minute and a half and now it's my turn to go, you know, I think I can make it and, you know, and I I just, I don't, I don't feel good about adding traffic to that intersection the way it is. That's my biggest hangup. And and that's why I've asked our our traffic engineer to, you know, what would the number be? I my gut tells me, you know, it's going to be something like a hundred. And and I don't mean a hundred and eight, I mean maybe ninety or something like that. It's and if you guys have no shot at getting there, we we should all be honest with each other and and just stop. I mean, I I think right now, this project, if you if we had to vote on it right now, I have a feeling you don't have the votes to to for this to pass. I mean, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but but I don't, I don't think you have the votes for this to pass right now. And I'm not not so sure, you know, small incremental changes are going to are going to help. So I, you know, I I, you know, I I think the next step is, you know, I I'd like a little bit more work done on the traffic analysis. You know, and and if this is the best you can do, then, you know, if you want to, you know, get more detailed drawings so Graves can review and that sort of stuff, then we can do that, but it just doesn't, right now, it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
So, okay, to to your point, you you're right. We only get opposition on every single thing we propose, no matter where we propose. Whether we're building affordable housing, whether we're building luxury houses, whether we're building houses for disability, no matter what we do. So so that we get and we're and we're used to getting some of that. Affordable housing, you know, we may not view it as affordable housing, but it is more affordable than a single family housing. Density is the way that you achieve affordable housing. You you can't build ten houses on ten acres and we don't, that's not affordable. So the product design is different and and it may be startling for some neighbors to think about it, but once it's up, it blends just like Stop and Shop. I'm sure it was, you know, something, you saw woods in the field there and now would envision looking at Stop and Shop, but we need Stop and Shop, right? We need a supermarket, we need, we need housing, we need affordable housing. So the design is is different. But because of that, we've left buffer areas and we've tried to mitigate that. And I think the process, you know, we 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 feel we can fit about three hundred units on this property and and don't, so so we start from there and then and then we work down and we say, okay, first of all, we need to make sure everything works from our point of view. Does our traffic work? I'm I'm sorry, not traffic. Let me let me stop with that one. We start with parking, we start with traffic flow within our development, we look at the the utilities, does utilities work? So all that, and we have no life safety issues and because we know that's that's a deal breaker right there. If there's life safety issues, that's not going to fly forty B or no forty B, that that's a that's a deal breaker. So we start with that number. And and I appreciate the board's time and I think I'm I'm happy even though you haven't given me the approval, which which I really want, but you you're working, we're working towards a goal, we're going down through the items, Mr. McCloskey met with somebody and reviewed the numbers and so and I appreciate your time doing that. We bring the traffic guy in and we talk about different parameters and and different levels of service and and I think that's all healthy and it's good for all of us. I'm learning from this guy, just like you're learning from this guy and 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 we bring these experts and one after the other and they tell us why this does work or doesn't work. So I think going through all those healthy process. So we we took this this project here from from around a three hundred number, we made a lip agreement with the with the selectmen and we dropped it down to the two sixty-eight number. We went to a few meetings with you guys and we we take notes on everything. We have meetings, we we look, we look at it. We do not ignore anything you say, so just like we listen to the Federal Reserve guy every word, we listen to you every word you guys say. So we make, we feel like the process is is of small adjustments, small adjustments and small adjustments. We're not doing anything radical here. We haven't stopped doing anything either. We're continuing to make changes and to listen to you right along the way. The day that we come in here and say, we're not making any more changes to this plan, that's the day you say approve, deny it. But we're not at that point yet. We're working through the process, we appreciate your time and we welcome another continuance and to continue on that path.
But but I'm not sure that you're hearing what we're saying, that incremental changes on this project are not going to get it approved based on the feedback that has been shared. You know, if your next iteration is, you know, a decrease of another thirty units, I don't know that it's worth our time to and I don't mean our time as the board, I mean everyone in this room. Your money spent redesigning plans that you know, don't make it worth having another three hour discussion about. I mean, I I don't think you're, and we've said that from the beginning. So I I'm not sure that you're listening to everything we're saying.
Well, we'd like to think that it's a process, it's not just an arbitrary, like I think the number, what number am I thinking of today? We're not just thinking of a number, we're looking at the area and we're looking at what that area can support and I think bringing this gentleman in here to talk about the traffic and to talk about the numbers, I can't argue with that. That's that's the right process to go with, rather than just say, I'm I'm thinking of a number, I think, let's look at, see what number negatively affects the area, negatively negatively affects the town negatively. I I I, what I've seen with these properties so far that we've built, that they've been a positive influence on the town. They bring tax dollars in, they bring housing in, they bring class A housing in that is gross, is dramatically needed, that that it's it's a workforce housing. I know that's a cliche, but it's true, but it's true. We need that. So I think the process is going well and I I don't, I don't feel like I should be doing anything radical here. I think incremental changes is is because we started with a plan that we thought was reasonable, but we're listening to see if there's comments there that we cannot address and that we need to make more changes.
But then it sounds like we're at the point where you need to take that drawing and start doing the more detailed work. So Graves can review that, we can go through that and then, you know, and and then we're going to get at the end, and you're not going to have the votes. We're not going to, I I don't think this board is going to approve that plan or anything even close to it. So we can do all that if you want. But that's what I think what we're trying to communicate is you don't have that support. Now, I agree, I, you know, I I said, I I think the number is going to be around a hundred and that's very arbitrary and I don't like doing that, but I I'll tell you what I, the number that isn't arbitrary for me and it's like, I don't want to add any more delay to that Snow Road intersection than, you know, than 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 we have to. I mean, so when we talk about adding, what was it, seventy seconds? Delay to Snow Road? No, absolutely not. You know, we want to talk about maybe adding twenty-five seconds and maybe that's a little more palatable, I guess, I don't know. I defer a little bit, but you know, that's in my mind, that's the problem is is, you know, that intersection right there. And and I'm as strong an advocate, if anybody follows my social media, you know, I'm a very strong advocate for affordable housing. I want to see affordable housing built. Right? I'm the one who spoke up against all the selectmen or against some of the selectmen for the town barn and and made it very clear that we need to build that project as much as so many people in town hated it. Right? I'm the one who admitted that for Prentice Place, I spoke so strongly against that sitting in this position. But I've admitted I was wrong. I admitted that publicly. That project actually came out really nice. Nobody even notices it as you drive by. That's that's fine. But in in and I'll I'll tell you this, I I think the same thing would happen regardless of how big these buildings are that all of a sudden shoot up behind Stop and Shop. Eventually, they'll they'll look okay and you won't even notice them. But what you will notice is waiting for two minutes to pull out of Snow Road, what you will notice is a person frustrated who decides to pull out in front of you because they think they can make it. What you will notice is the accidents. And that's the part that that becomes a showstopper for me.
Traffic is 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 a function of, you know, I'm I'm a pretty old guy here in this room and I, you know, grew up in a different era, maybe maybe Peter's about my age, I'm seventy and I I grew up in a house.
I'm older.
Congratulations, I think, I don't know, but I grew up in a house with with one car and my my dad took the car to work, so we had no car at home. And we waited for my dad to come home and then we had the car. Today, we're we're affluent Americans and and there's fricking four cars in everybody's driveway and everybody's, you know, every car you look in is one person driving somewhere. So, you know, that that's to me the function of why we have so much traffic is because we're affluent here. But the but the other side of it is we know when the peak traffic periods are. We all know this. If you 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 know your neighborhood, you know your town, you know where the peak traffic is and if you don't like it, you don't go there. Like I know certain areas, I I don't I don't go through Westboro Center between these hours and these hours because I know that road is just jammed all the way through there. I don't, you know, but sometimes I do get caught in it and I'm saying, oh, son of a gun, how did I get over here at this time of the day, you know? I have that luxury, I guess, because I have a little more flexible schedule and probably most of you guys do it too, but when I was twenty and thirty, I didn't because I had a more routine schedule and those guys have to wait in all that traffic, but generally we don't. So like the gentleman's whose wife is concerned about going to traffic, she knows when that bad traffic there and she doesn't have to go there, but yes, it's not an excuse for us making it much worse and that's why in the very beginning of this project there, we looked at that intersection, we said that intersection is a problem. Let's propose a turn lane there without anybody even asking to make this a better turn lane. So we will continue to look at that intersection. We hear you that that is kind of like the Achilles heel of this project. Is that intersection right there and we'll we'll look at it some more and.
All right, I mean, we're kind of going round and round. What I'm hearing is that you want to, you know, move forward with what you've got, I think, and Dan, I kind of defer a little bit, look to you, look at the guidance here, I think. You know, probably the next step is is to come up with some more detailed drawings so that we can get in front of our peer review. I'd like a little bit more analysis from our traffic guy. And, you know, let's do that work for our next meeting and we'll go from there, I guess. I I think we're wasting our time.
I think it's productive time.
Okay.
I I just had one comment, just listening to Steve and and the way he was kind of talking about the process about, you know, getting to a comfort level and a density, they're going to keep sharpening their pencil, we're going to keep making comments. But I I think it's important to to stick a step, take a step back and and remember that the reason we're in forty B world is because of zoning bylaws that were deemed to be a barrier to cheaper housing. And you only waive zoning bylaws when you aren't in safe harbor and you are at ten percent. And you're in safe harbor, so shouldn't the baseline be your zoning bylaws, your wetland bylaws, right, your subdivision control standards? To me, that's the baseline. Now, you have the flexibility of still granting waivers even though you're in safe harbor. But I don't think it's as arbitrary as as Steve was sort of making it sound like, you know, we can just talk about a density that we're all comfortable with. I I think you really should, the board would be well served to look at this as your baseline is your zoning. So if it's thirty-five units, I I haven't done the capacity analysis, I don't know what it is. Whatever that number is, it's a subdivision with thirty-five lots, maybe it's a multifamily development using your multifamily housing bylaw at with five thousand square feet of open space per unit, all those criteria. That, to me, is the baseline and then you can go from there, kind of step up to say, we have a housing need, we want to, we want to address it, we want to get closer to our ten percent, we want to not, we want to use the safe harbor's opportunity to still produce housing. But to me, that's the smart way to manage this application is to use a baseline to go from and that helps you build a record that's defensible. So if someone does appeal to us, you know, you've got you, we're not just throwing a number out there that's, sounds like a good number. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I I think it's very logical.
So and again, it's it's their prerogative if they want to continue forward and come back with a plan that reduces it by thirty units, they have the right to do that and then it's their money, we we spend their money on peer review and you know, a couple of things we haven't done is civil, so we don't have any any comments from Jeff yet, we haven't we haven't sent out any environmental review, so made a comment, we we have Scott Horstley available to do a hydro review, given the well. To me, that that's as as big a concern as the as the traffic with the with the intersection. On my list, I've got, you know, seven great things we talked about tonight in terms of follow-up items on traffic, particularly that intersection. So I think we give the applicant, you know, this direction, these are the things we want to see at the next meeting. We want to see civil peer review done and then I guess my only question back to the board would be, do you want to start any hydro review at this stage or save that for a later date?
I mean, I would pose that to the applicant. I mean, you're paying for it.
No, I don't think, we're not, we're not ready for hydro because because we don't have a a con- a concept plan approved. What we really need is a concept plan approved so we know how much impervious and where the driveways are and where the buildings are, so I think we'd be just throwing money away if we did that. To 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 Dan's point about the zoning area, you know, I I'm doing a development on the other side, I'm building thirty-eight houses in the town of Westboro on a hundred acres. That that's what your zoning allows and it took me five years to get that through the planning board. That's what it takes to build single family houses and they're going to start at about a million dollars apiece. That's that's what your zoning allows.
They're going to start at what?
Around a million dollars apiece.
Yeah, but they're big houses. They're three thousand, four thousand square feet.
Yeah, but the cost of the land is so high, I mean, that's that's.
I know what you, we all know what you paid for this land. If you put thirty houses on it, you're looking at what, three thousand a a lot, raw costs?
You paid five fifty, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. My numbers are off a little bit, but it's not much.
And and if I and if I paid five million, you give me, you give me three hundred houses? What is that?
No, no, I'm I'm saying, I'm not, we're not trying to take money away from you, we're trying to do something that'll work.
That's what we're trying to get to. That's what we're trying to get to.
These numbers won't work.
So to do the civil review, we need civil plans, right?
Yeah, but we had one civil review.
But Jeff, but Jeff cannot review your revision unless he has a full set.
That, well, that's what I'm saying. We did, what I'm saying, we did have an initial civil review, so with whatever the the modified layout is.
Right.
We'll grade it, drainage, do everything and also take into account his comments from the previous layout.
So I I go to the applicant, what do you want to do next year?
Well, again, I I would say that the hardest obstacle for us to satisfy with you, I think, is the traffic, right?
Yeah. So let's continue with-
So, so we, we have two options. We can close the hearing entirely and vote, which I don't think you want us to do.
No.
Or we can continue.
Continue.
What are we going to do at that next meeting? Or what's going to happen between now and that next meeting?
Definitely, we're going to have our traffic consultant, you know-
Review and comment.
Review and comment, and if we can reach out and discuss some things, so at least we can-
Absolutely.
And then we can get into some of the items that you had requested in terms of-
We'll see what kind of numbers, see what kind of numbers our traffic guy comes up with and see what we need to adjust to make traffic look more acceptable. I don't know if we'll get exactly what everyone's ideal number is, but maybe we will. I, I don't want to comment on that until we look at that and study that.
I think what we need is, I think we should work with John. Maybe you and I, Bill, can work with John to revise his letter. Get that letter maybe next week or so, if you have time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll incorporate comments that, you know, other issues that were brought to light here. And we would great, you know, really appreciate any comments or responses from your, your traffic engineer.
But there's a lot of follow-up. We need graphing police crash reports. That might take a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
You know, an intersection design for Snow Road and 122. I think this board wants to see that. Is that right?
Yep.
You want to see what that would look like. If, if T-intersection, you still have to get Mass Highway approval. So any approval this board gives is going to be contingent upon that. But at least showing us a design that could work, I think is something the board wants to see.
Hold on.
Do you want to see?
Do we see the outside of 22?
Snow Road as well?
Yeah, right. So the, the study area for East Street, you got to add that to your,
to your traffic report. Do you want to see HTR data, the speed data for the tubes?
Yeah.
So that's something you get lined up. So is this a lot of follow-up? I think it's going to take several weeks at your end.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And then, then, I mean, it's going to take some time for our traffic engineer to-
Right.
Do these analyses, get the data.
Cue analysis.
Exactly.
There's some work to do.
That, that's-
How much time you want?
It's quite a bit of work.
I don't know when you-
You know, we're heading into Christmas.
New Year's.
End of January? Beginning of February?
January 30th.
What's the next? What, what do we have?
Beginning of February?
February 6th would be the beginning of February. It's a Thursday.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
February 1st would be the beginning of February.
Well, I know, but the first Thursday. The first Thursday is the 6th.
All right, February 6th.
All right, before we get there, Mr. Whitney, something very quick and new?
Yes. Richard Whitney, 13 Greeney Drive. If they come in the next meeting without any of all the stuff that you've asked tonight, I expect or request you to close this hearing, vote on it, and end this bull.
Thank you. Mr. Prisby, something new and something quick, please.
Ed, unmute.
Yeah, sorry. I had to click on the thing.
That's okay.
It Prisby, 25 Daniel Drive. You know, a, a few things here, just real quick. You know, Chair mentioned he felt like he wasn't being heard. I, I would echo those comments. I, I feel like, I, I can't even tell you, I, I'm banging my head against the board here, trying to describe to you that there's a housing crisis, and you plow straight through it to let's get fewer units. Now, if there's a traffic issue, then that's perfectly fine. Get a traffic study done. But when you guys start talking about my gut says, or my intuition says, or, and I wrote this down twice, it may be arbitrary, but that's the definition of arbitrary and capricious. And I know Dan Hill knows full well what arbitrary and capricious is. And by the way, when council starts showing up and saying, there's an urbanization of suburbs, my antennas go up. I don't know what that means, but I know it's a decent way to deny housing to people that need it. People in your community need housing. They do desperately. Is it this particular project and these particular plans? I don't know. But when I'm listening to you guys and I hear that, I'm like, ah, the fix is in. The fix is in. It's all about lesser units. And, you know, I know half of you aren't even paying attention to me talking right now, so I'm going to shut up.
Thank you.
So, Dan, the analysis you mentioned about the number of units that could be built within the zoning bylaws, is that something Jeff could do?
Yeah. Fiona can do it. Yeah. Fiona can do it.
It's not, it's not going to be a, a perfect scientific.
No, it's just directional.
Doing that, but just having a, a concept plan drawn up is, maybe you guys have done it already. Sometimes when you do an appraisal, did Mass Housing do an appraisal?
Did we require that?
Oh, this is a lip.
I had to do it.
They did do, they did do an appraisal, but just as the land.
There's no-
There's no convention.
Highest and best used based on conventional zoning, given that.
No.
So Fiona could maybe put, put that together. And we could also look at, if this was in the multifamily housing district, what the potential density would be as a multifamily. I think that's useful. So just having that as basically data is helpful.
Yeah.
So Peter just brought up a point. He had to, and I thought, don't our rules state that they have to do that as part of?
So if you, if, if it's not a lip and you go to Mass, if they go to Mass Housing for a project eligibility letter, they do have to do an appraisal as the highest and best used to establish what the land value is.
All right.
I thought you had to do it for a loop too, but you don't.
You do, but they just phrase, there's a house there.
As a single-family house.
Yeah. They just phrase what was there.
Okay, that's unusual. Usually, you do an appraisal showing what the highest and best use is. That's your, that's your basis for land acquisition, even if it's worth less.
All right, so-
But I think we got to set some benchmark dates for them. So we need to get them that feedback from the traffic engineer, then they should get us. We have a lot of time to work with. We should set a deadline for them to give us their responses. So then John can look at those responses before the next meeting on February 6th.
So Katrina, what, what's our 180-day date, you know?
It's from when we receive it, right? Or when we open it?
From the opening of the hearing.
So we open the hearing October 3rd.
That's April something.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2nd or 3rd. So time is getting short to when we're-
Yeah, but you, you can deny it. It's not, it's their, it's, it's in their best interest to extend that.
I was going to say, what's the or else? There is no or else, is there?
Yeah. No.
That's true.
So do you want to set a deadline for them to respond to the traffic stuff?
Yeah, no.
For the February 6th meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, can you get something to us?
No, but we, no, you started late on, and I started thinking in my head and I got distracted. But, you know, so we, we, we should probably before the holidays, get them an updated letter.
Right.
Right? And then I don't know what the timeline should be from there, but, you know, I would think they, they should get us something. If we're meeting February 6th, and they should get us something a couple of weeks later, you know, middle of January.
I think that's fair. It really comes down to, we obviously, when we get the letter too.
Steve, you got to come to the mic. We can't hear you. We're going to get yelled at.
James Venakas, like, yeah, I mean, it really would depend on when we got the letter. I mean, if, you know, we got it today.
Yeah.
It was a little difficult, but, you know, as long as we, if we get the letter in a week, then yes, it didn't matter a couple of weeks.
And what we're talking about is an updated traffic letter.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. Because we're going to be working off of the updated traffic letter, not the one that's here, correct?
Correct.
And then can Ali will-
Although, although I think there's a lot in there that is still valid.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, he was still, I mean, we're not going to throw it away. And then Ali did ask, is it okay for him to reach out to John direct to, who's our traffic study, so that they can discuss?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, perfect.
Yep.
And you don't want-
Did you just look at me cross? Is that not okay?
No.
Okay, I thought you gave me a look like, like, what the hell are you doing?
Dan should give a look.
It's usually us getting that look.
Wrong direction.
So we don't want them to start the civil on, on the-
They're, they're the ones saying, no, we don't. Yeah.
We'd rather continue with traffic. In all honesty, once we, I don't want to say it's easy, but it's, that's stuff that-
We're not concerned about.
We're not necessarily concerned about. We know that we can handle it from what Jeff's original letter was. And now we know we have the area to, we met our stormwater requirements, what the requirement is. We want to beef that up. We know we have the area and the ability to do it. So I'm not as concerned about it. I think the biggest, the biggest thing right now is traffic.
Every time we reduce density in the project, it's easier to do civil, right?
Yeah, I guess the reason I raise it is that in order to do any kind of water quality analysis for the well, we need to know where the drainage systems are. So that just delays that review, if you want to do that review.
I, but I, I don't think, I don't think we have a choice, right? And, you know, so, you know, I think this board has communicated that what they have right now is, is, is not going to work. I think they want to go off and look at the traffic, see if they can do some things to help solve the traffic problem. And presumably, what falls out of that is if they can solve the traffic problem, then maybe this board becomes okay with the, if they can't solve the profit problem, then maybe they come up with something different.
Exactly.
Then they can start getting more into the, the details. I mean, so, you know.
That makes sense.
Enter into motion to continue case number, whatever.
910.
Something new, sir, very brief.
Yes, it is.
Okay, very briefly, sir. To the microphone.
Does.
To the microphone, please.
Jimbo Vosey, 30 Snow Road. Does it mean that if the traffic study is found not to improve the situation, is it the board's intention to ask for a new design plan with less density?
I think that's-
Just trying to cut to the chase here.
I think that's the implication, but I, the board is not in a position to ask the developer to do anything.
Well, then, you're not giving the, you're not giving the developer enough to bring back other than a traffic study. They're under, no, it's, it's a continuance on a continuance, because then they're encumbered to ask for a continuance if the traffic study is inadequate, or if you deem it so, somebody deems it so, then they have to look at a new redesign. And I'm not saying I want that, or I don't want that, by the way. But that is the gist of it.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we know what to do.
Interesting motion to continue case number, what is it?
910.
910 to February 6th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Yep, second.
On a roll call, Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Mihia.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Vice chairman votes yes.
You have another one.
You too. Have a good one.
It's up to Volga.
Alex says, no, I don't want to.
Um, we got case, Brian, we got case-
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm, well, I can't.
Oh, yeah. So, all right. So I move, we continue. What's Logan path?
906.
906.
I move, we continue case 906 to February 6th at 7:00 PM.
So moved. Oh, second.
Oh, yeah, second.
Motion made in seconded, Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. McCusker.
Yes.
Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Mihia.
Yes.
People, we're still in a meeting. If you want to have a discussion, please step outside. Thank you.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. McCusker.
Yes.
Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
Here you go.